Call this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve Holt texted me this morning, he will not be calling.
Busy?
Yeah. I, uh, I'll wait.
Is it the time that, is it the nine o'clock that problematic work or nothing? Oh, no disrespect, they were trying this within like the last couple of years and it still seemed to, I mean, do we need to move to like eight thirty?
I think it's the committee things.
They come up, I think they pop up different times and he gets called off to do that. But he said nine, nine oh five was a good time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think they're just getting close to.
Pretty fluid down there or just something.
Stuff coming out of subcommittees and into, yeah, I think there's just a lot of that going on.
You know, the day he would have been on.
I seen on his thing too where he's actually running some bills, so he's probably got plenty to do.
Uh, review the agenda, anybody?
I'd like to strike Caitlin from coming, uh, she's gonna be here on the eleventh, so she will not be here for her update. She'll be here on the eleventh.
Anything else with the agenda? Okay, with that strike, we'll approve the agenda then. Reading of the minutes.
I've got two to read, Monday is on Tuesday, it's January twenty seven, twenty twenty five. Board of Supervisors met at eight AM with Dave Mulbauer, Chair Presiding Members present, Dozart Mulbauer, Hyden and Rossford. The board met with department heads, sorry, for budget work sessions at eleven thirty. The board took a recess, the board reconvened at one PM to meet with department heads for budget work sessions. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at four twelve PM. Agendas for the next meeting posted and available on Friday, four thirty preceding the next meeting. January twenty eight, twenty twenty five, the Board of Supervisors met nine AM with Dave Mulbauer, Chair Presiding Members present, Dozart Mulbauer, Hyden and Rossford. Iowa State Representative Steve Holt joined the board via phone with some legislative updates. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved on motion. The board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The board approved the hiring of Garth Wolf, fill in Deputy Sheriff's Office. The board approved the hiring of Delilah Lopez, full-time home and health and hospice nurse, public health. Taya Benami, Director Recovery Center, Manning Regional Healthcare Center. Updated the board on what the opioid funding is being utilized for prevention, staff training and education, new ACM guidelines. And MAT, that's Medication Assistance Treatment. At eleven fifteen, the board went into recess. The board reconvened for budget work sessions with department heads at twelve thirty PM. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at three fifty four PM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Any corrections or revisions to the minutes?
One, hold on, max front page for you to sign. Thanks.
Supervisor reports.
Well, I don't have. I know the Conservation Board meeting, Moana, Park, four fifty. PM, uh, weed commissioner pay, you all seen the email about that. I mean, where do we want to start with that? Terry was asking, did you talk?
I talked to him and I thought it was twenty because we told, I thought consensus was to offer it at twenty two, so.
And that's.
Because we decided that to get a weed commissioner.
No, let me get email. And that's fine, I know Terry just sent an email yesterday. Questioning, is that what we agreed on?
I, I did, maybe that was my mistake, but I thought the consensus was to offer it at twenty two, what we had to the first.
I'm, I guess I'm fine with, I mean, twenty, I was just looking through some of the budget stuff and I think some of them, part-time, I don't even know what they are in the sheriff's department, they're twenty-two bucks. So I don't, I don't know if they're jailers or if they're, what they are. They're twenty-two dollars an hour and I don't even know what, what they are, so I don't know, twenty's out, out of line.
I don't think.
Well, that's what he already got offered. I guess that's what I'm, and that's fine. That's what he thinks he's making.
He accepted the job for that, so.
Oh, you put a twenty? Um, yeah, and I, well, that's about all I had, I know Gene, I had some updates on the building over there.
You?
I don't, I don't have anything.
Oh, boy.
Well, that's not the best part.
Well, um, after going to our meetings in Des Moines, uh, last week, and, uh, Kelly Garcia giving her update to where we are.
That was a little frustrating.
And being told that we really should not ask any questions that would cause any stress to anybody. I'm frustrated because I went back and I looked at the bill, the way that it's supposed to kind of be going, and we should be knowing something by this time. So it says that they're going to revert their many funds to HHS by July first of twenty twenty five. Where my problem is, is that Caitlin, who was supposed to be here, not to, she had another appointment. It made us very aware of that, so it's not like she, she just can't make it today. But she was hoping to know what her role was going to be, um, because she is still gonna be in our little region here, so she could still service us, but they're going to revert the funds. So these people, I called Steve and left him a message and he said he would get his staff working on it, and I did send him a text this morning to see if his staff had found out anything. Who will we call from Crawford County after July first? That will take care of being advocate for our mentally ill, uh, patients. And there is quite a list of them according to Caitlin, she has a, a big caseload over here in Crawford County. The problem's gonna be, they, they have to know if they're going to have a job, because in their line of work, everybody that's jumping off is going to have the good jobs. And if, if they're the last to find out, oh, sorry, we don't need you, they're gonna be on unemployment. Who's going to pay that? Cause there'll be no twenty eighty anymore for the counties to help Buena Vista pay her unemployment. And that was always part of the twenty eighty problem, cause there is no region. So that is a disappointment to me that we couldn't get that answered. How, where our advocates will be, how we get ahold of them, what, how they're gonna service us and get up to speed with what the people that have been taking care of our people. So Steve is working on that for me, uh, to just kind of see if he can find out what the plan is. I'm disappointed that we don't have that plan, that you can't say, well, we will, uh, try to keep those people employed. But when you visit with the folks that have been, uh, county employees, they maybe don't wanna be state employees. And they for sure don't wanna be, uh, public, you know, uh, for private, uh, you know, offer, you know, not have the benefits that they've had all these years. Whole new boss, whole new system, uh, but they need to know, you, they have families to take care of. And if they're gonna be unemployed as of July first, they need to be finding a job in their field, you know? Uh, and I understand the frustration of that, so hopefully by the eleventh, there might, Caitlin was hoping that they would hear how this is gonna all work, but, uh, as of the last Wednesday.
There just wasn't a lot of info given out.
Did you notice that? Yeah. It, it's a, it was a big undertaking, uh, you know, when I look at their, uh, plan of how they're gonna have, have it all, established the responsibilities of HHS to publish the initial transition plan by September thirtieth of twenty twenty four on the HHS website. I don't know, there's my frustration, but, uh, I kinda went back and reviewed all of this alignment that they all had. I'm not sure if we're running exactly, um, on target, uh, so that's my number one frustration. Was this, so we also had our, uh, three county, uh, early childhood. And they're planning to restructure their restructure of ECI per the governor's, uh, e-mail from, uh, January twenty fourth of twenty five. Uh, so they'll be drafting a bill and there'll be more information coming on that also.
Some of that changes, it's gonna be, I think they wanna do, pull four-year-olds out of that, is that right?
Well, you know, that, there was some talk.
They pulled, turned them on the funding from ECI, I think it's been schools or that.
Well, but the thing is, we don't have that much money to pull.
Right, and I would say they're pretty good, like sixteen million. Don't quote me, I'm just.
Molly, you know, did, uh, announce that she will be only working part-time, uh, for Crawford County and, uh, the, uh, de-cap because of the funding issues, so she's, uh, gonna work approximately eight hours for each county.
A week.
A week. So lots of changes coming, there, the whole meetings anymore is, uh, funding. These grants, uh, took a lot of notes on this, but, uh, family steps, a, a part of it, you know, the, how that is funded for, um, it's over in our public health part. They kinda give their direction from Mills County. And Mills County kinda let their administrator and two of their, uh, nurses go, uh, over some. I did talk to the Mills County supervisor a little bit and, uh, we exchanged phone numbers, but have not put our heads together on exactly why he found it, they found it necessary to, uh, relieve their administrator of some duties. Had a little bit to do in the short conversation we had with how the grant money was coming in and how they were not maybe possibly putting that in the right pew when they got their grant money in. So obviously they had a case, cause they're, she's gone and, uh, at my last public health meeting, uh, Kim was concerned on who's gonna actually facilitate these grants, cause Mills County kinda got the money and helped to spur. So lots of moving parts in public health and mental health. And nothing it is, nothing of it is reassuring to me. So that's my short version of my, uh, week, so.
Time.
Time. Take it away.
Well, I thought we had a, an interesting statewide supervisor meeting. I think the meeting the day before was probably more helpful.
It's time and I, we had a supervisor affiliate meeting, the day before.
But, uh, I mean, nothing was really spoke about other than, I don't know, the, I, I don't know that, uh, telling supervisors that, uh, we have to change our messaging, is probably the.
From, who told?
Well, we just kinda got.
Who said that?
Well, our, uh, President of the Supervisors is, the thing, he kinda got up and did come directly out and say it. And though Gene didn't, Gene, I would say that we gathered a new word out of that that's probably gonna be beneficial. Instead of saying improving, they were gonna modernize.
Modernize.
Gonna modernize, so, um, but, you know, we've, we've, we look at the issues from.
Modernize what?
Well, if anything that you're gonna improve, instead of calling it improving, we're gonna modernize. So in any event, I, we just, we gathered that in the meeting, you know? We're going to the, if you, if you wanna know more, we can define later, but the, uh, we look at things from a different perspective than our state counterparts. You know, it's just like when we, when we look at our federal counterparts, I shouldn't say counterparts, you know, our, there, we work on the, we work for the same people. All of us do, you know, but we work with them every week, all week, or here, every day. Our states, people go up there to the State House, but they're, they're back here most every weekend. I mean, I'm sure they got weekends where they're busy doing stuff, but they're here most weekends. So they still are in touch with what's happening, what, what their decisions up there do, are doing to affect us. Pretty good, I'd say, some are not, choose to ignore that, but most of them got a pretty good concept. But then when you go to the federal level, I think that they, you know, they're, they can be up there, and sometimes they're back on the weekends, but they're catered around, you know, I mean, they're, they're carried around by their handlers. Be the only way I can say to put it. And, uh, they're rushed from one event to the next to try to get as much done while they can, while they're here. So for us to stop talking to them, or at least stop being direct with them about what, how they're affecting what we're doing, I, I think it's doing a disservice to them, it's damn sure dis, doing a disservice to the people that we represent. But I think we're doing a disservice to them. Now, do I think our messaging doesn't need necessarily need to be brutal all the time? Yeah, I think it probably needs to be a little more. Well, and when it's deserved, I will agree, Gene, if they're, if they're doing stuff and just choosing to ignore what's coming up from the people, I think then we probably need to be brutal. Be at least brutally honest, not necessarily brutally, in a, in a negative sense, but brutally honest.
Director Garcia's presentation, we were told multiple times, be respectful and play nice, basically.
Multiple times, almost to the point where, don't ask any question.
Even with the legislation, you know, I get it, we all need to respect each other, but there is a point in time when.
I get it.
You have to say.
I get it.
Also, this is not working, this is how it's affecting us.
If I can, it, it appeared that it was just the same, that nothing was, had changed in a year. No new information was gathered.
I didn't learn anything from her.
Did you learn anything?
I mean.
Same.
I would like to, uh, my, my, my concern when we walked out of there is that July one is gonna be a little bit chaotic. That might be the best way to put it, that's my concern, I hope to God I'm wrong. I mean, I'm not there working with them every day either, so I mean, what they're actually getting done, I don't see. And that, it might be all going according to plan, I don't know, see, I guess. My, my concern is though, it might be a bit chaotic.
I think by now, we should know if we have somebody in a mental illness episode after July first, who. Little one, yeah.
There's anything I can file with you guys to try to get this property cleaned up out there? I don't know, I just went to the sheriff's office and to the county attorney, but they said maybe try you guys too.
Oh, come, well.
That's, oh, I know where to knock it.
That's the first step.
Yeah.
According to our nuisance, the sheriff's department.
I feel bad about him, sick him, and he's.
But he's supposed to pay it to the county attorney.
He just moved a double car garage out there, he's got a pickup load of junk this morning, he just doesn't stop.
No.
Yeah.
This is the first I'm hearing about that.
I've seen it this weekend.
Do you wanna give me a call maybe, uh, and I'll go out there with you?
Yeah.
You got my number, don't you?
I don't think so, grab your email up.
Yeah, email.
Okay, yeah.
All our numbers are on the county website, so.
Sounds good, give me a ring and I'll come out and we'll look at it.
Yeah.
It's terrible.
When I was on my way down there the other day, I seen it, it is.
Just have, have cold brings.
But that's, that's example of, right, citizen that's frustrated goes through the right channels. Nothing channels don't get, nothing gets done.
It's such a, yeah, I.
Kinda what we're on, on the.
Got it, got it.
Thanks, Dave.
I'll look at it and we'll.
Example given.
Example given.
Yeah, I, uh.
But shouldn't they know by now? Yep, I will, I will, I'll start there.
And maybe he must meet you with.
Well, all right. I, I guess I'm frustrated because, you know, look at it, because I kinda pulled all this stuff out after I got home to see, you know, what I had gotten last year, you know, how I could update it, and I just don't, we should know.
You think, Gene, that they know, but they don't wanna tell you?
Is it bad news?
That's what I'm wondering.
I didn't wanna go there, here, Craig, so thank you for feeding into my.
Paranoia?
Trying to stay positive attitude.
I mean, sometimes I wonder, I guess government, you know, government, um, we're gonna do it this way. These other people in government aren't gonna like it, so we're not gonna tell them till the very, very end when we start to implement it.
You weren't even there and you're picking up what I put up here.
Yeah, then I would question why even agree to come do a statewide supervisory if you aren't gonna.
Good point.
Give out any information.
Yeah.
I just feel for the, for Caitlin, you know, she's working up in BV County, has a caseload of, of people that she's working through. And who's gonna, and she cares about these people. And who's gonna know the backstory on what this person has been going through and how they've been working, you know? Who's gonna be able to pick that up in one day and be able to take care of that with? They, they should be gradually getting people, if it's not gonna be her, who is it gonna be? If it's somebody from the, uh, pu, private or public, uh, entity that they hired, shouldn't they be putting up, uh, job applications for, hey, come join our team, it's gonna be great, we're gonna, you know, and give them, give somebody some positive instead of all of this? People are sick on their stomach, wondering if they're going to lose their jobs. And then we have the concern of who's gonna pay unemployment, because there's no region, there's no twenty eighty, so is BV gonna be stuck with that?
Gene, you gotta get your heart off your sleeve.
Okay. He brought it up, all right, I'm sorry, all right, I digress.
Well, and that's kinda lead some of the comments that were made and what you're saying there. I mean, I, I asked the question about where will these health, mental health centers be? I don't know for sure what we're supposed to call them, but clinics or whatever, I don't know where they're gonna be. And we're gonna start with a number that to me, oh, we've got more juvenile detention centers than we're gonna have mental health clinics. And we do know real, we do know that mental health is what ends up getting them kids in that place, anyway. But I did ask about that too. What we're gonna do about the mental health issues in these juvenile detention centers, and she said she's working on that.
That's the reason why most of our juvenile detention centers are full, like you said, it's the mental health that problem, and it's only gonna get worse.
It is, it is, early prevention.
And you know, I.
It's key, getting in the schools.
I mean, I, I'm frustrated too a little bit, to, to, to some degree, I mean, I know, I know the governor cares about Iowa and Iowans. So I, I gotta assume that this is tracking in a direction that she thinks is gonna take care of our people. And still not cost our people too much, but, you know, I mean, yeah, gotta let things happen. You know, it's just like with what's going on in Washington, you gotta.
Trust the process.
Trust, it's just started, you know, and, and will mental health, you know, services get better? I mean, they, we were having our, we, we were having some troubles with, you know, providers, I mean, we were losing providers in our area. You know, I mean, so it's, there's a challenge to that. And, oh, I don't wanna say I'm gonna take a wait and see attitude, cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna have somebody jumping off a bridge while we're waiting to see, you know what I mean?
Well.
But I also, I also do know that, you know, we spend a lot of money, and so we gotta make sure that we're spending it efficient and sometimes unifying stuff, or putting it under a central command, you, you, if, if it's working properly, they see where the monies are going and you're not, well, we, and they, we've talked about it, you know, not so much with her, but, you know, I mean, have repetitive services that are basically sitting empty. I mean, we had buildings up in Sioux City, we complained about under our system.
You just get by questions, and if you didn't answer, answer the questions right, we can't see you.
Yeah, so I mean, we, we gotta get rid of those kind of expenses that we're doing nothing for. You know, so hopefully that's gonna happen in this new system. So I mean, I'm tossed right now, I'm a little confused, because I don't know that I, I mean, I never really got an answer on where these were gonna be, I mean, I'm afraid it'll all be over in Eastern Iowa is my biggest fear, central to eastern.
I, I do think though, combining substance use with mental health and call it behavioral, is a huge step in the right direction. So that you can not overlap services, but have them all under one umbrella. And then when you bring in Taya, uh, what they, I mean, very passionate about what.
I think substance abuse comes, comes from mental health in a lot of regards.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But you also hear that we have a ninety-two person waiting list. Simple, you would think that would be simple, people that want to get help and there's a waiting list, sixteen beds and ninety-two people. Just it doesn't seem like things are getting better, and then you go and listen to, you know, this.
Well, I'm gonna give them a chance.
Okay.
I guess that's what I'm saying.
What, what choice do we have?
Yeah, we don't have a choice, I guess, but you know, I'm gonna give them a chance.
But I do think keeping it in the forefront, you know, so that, that we all have the same mission to get to that July first date and have that figured out, rather than get to the July first date and wonder why nobody brought that up.
Well, that's why I started this with saying, uh, I don't think we need to be nice all the time. We need to, we need to make sure they hear what the hell we're saying out here. And, you know, and that was your domain, so to speak.
For a minute, yeah.
You were the rolling hills, you know, that was your thing, so that the fact that your passions are, oh, you know, much, I won't say they're, they're more visible than ours, but I, I don't, I don't know that they're more passionate than ours, but they are more visible than ours, because you were active in that. And so I understand why you're more frustrated, cause you seen what was working, you seen what was wrong. Yeah, and there was a lot working in there. But to, to, to expand on the, on the meetings, I will say that I actually got a lot out of the, uh, two lobbyists.
I was gonna bring that up.
To what?
The two lobbyists.
We had two lobbyists there and they kinda went through the lobbying process and the different lobbyists and.
The lobby for ISAC?
No, no.
They're private, private lobbyists that lobby for, you could, actually, I think the one guy said he even worked for Polk County, so no wonder they don't show up to all, I mean, they, they do their own thing, you know? But.
That, that was very, very interesting, I thought it was insightful for supervisors to see the process of what they work with.
Yeah.
And.
And you know, they made a lot of sense on some things, you know, I've, I've never been real sure how I feel about lobbyists. I mean, I see where they benefit when, you know, like Iowa pork companies, you know, Iowa cattle, that, that is a lobbyist group, you know, they're a trade association. You know, those are lobbyists that, that law, that, that make sure that the issues and concerns of their.
Clients.
Clients are their, they, you know, the, the farmers or the peg group, you know, I mean, and it's all, just about everybody that's got an industry is got a trade association, and they, they go make sure that they're, they're, oh, oh, their interests are always being looked after up there. Whether it's Des Moines or Washington. And, uh, so in that regard, lobbyists serve a good purpose. But then I never thought about some of the other stuff they're doing, by, by, by helping our state officials to craft good bills, fair bills. Um, I'm sure that sometimes they try to get everything pulled more to their side, and that's, I guess, the job of our people that we, that we hire through the elections, is to make sure that they keep everybody in mind, not just one particular trade association, though sometimes I think that may not happen as well as should, you know? But, uh, but you know, I really got a lot out of them, I mean.
You do.
And they did, they talked about, you know, the modernization, what we were talking about, instead of using improving things, instead of saying, let's improve this bill by doing this, let's modernize this bill to do, you know, so it says these things, you know? And, you know, they talked about some of the ways that they work so that they don't turn ears away, but actually turn their ears towards their message, you know, I mean, I thought that, I, I, I kinda enjoyed that, you know? I got a little bit out of it, you know, cause I thought about how I word things and sometimes, and, you know, sometimes that can be a little crass, you know, and.
The gentleman's attitude.
I, one takeaway I got from them is, in a way, they helped that the process.
Yeah, they do.
Cause if you have two opposing bills or you have, they'll come up with two opposing sides, however you look at it. You know, each side is, well, if you do this, this is a ripple effect of this, and I mean, they kinda get into the weeds, I think, or into the details, the nitty gritty of, of what could happen. And to be there kind of pointing those things out, rather than just having something automatically go through with.
Yeah.
Not much discussion. Like you said, a lot of times bills get changed because of the different lobbyists there, because of the unintentional consequences I wouldn't realize, when they get pointed out. It was interesting, I thought, I thought they were.
I liked the guy's attitude.
He was not a BSer, he was, this is.
He was straight.
He was, uh, yep, yep.
Like we are not, just so I'm gonna tell you.
Yep.
Sometimes when you mention the pork industry or the beef cattle industry, you know, sometimes their lobbyists. Sometimes when you mention the pork industry or the beef cattle industry, you know, sometimes their lobbyists. From the member standpoint, that sometimes they look too much into affect the corporate. People that are represented through that organization, and they do the people that got, uh, you know, feet on the, on the, on the road, so to speak. You know, that are actually out there doing it, and just an example, it would be country of origin labeling that, by and large, every single producer is in favor of that. Now, it doesn't get past, you know, um, Iowa Cattlemen's Association are really favored that, because the Packers aren't in favor of that. Even though probably ninety percent of the cattleman are, you know? So, that gets to be a frustrating standpoint.
Iowa Cattlemen shouldn't allow Packers to be members.
Money.
Money, right, what are they paying for fees to that organization? You see that when you go through your Iowa Cattlemen's magazine and the gold or whatever they call them, and it's.
Corporate sponsors.
You know, it's card deal, it's.
On that point, okay, that's why I think you see growing organizations like our cap.
Exactly, now we have a competitor.
Well, U S Cattlemen, that's where they came from.
Right, good point, that's what's happening, yeah.
I think that, uh, and that's, that's a great point, I mean, those are things that are, are wrong with our, the lobbying side of things, I guess you could say. I mean, uh, we got all these heavy duty, extra heavy duty trucks running around, thanks to, uh, some, a few particular lobbies, you know, stuff like that. I mean, so yeah, that does, but then once again, that meant that somebody like us didn't have as good a lobby to talk back. You see what I'm saying?
Didn't have the money to buy the, the guy.
That's probably true, too, I do, but, I mean, so I mean, that's, I, so I guess I, I learned a little bit, is what I'm getting at, I mean, I'm.
That was, was.
It was insightful.
I didn't like that one, yep.
It was.
They had the EMS essential services, uh, not to go into TIF, remember that one? Uh, calls for change, and that's House File, or Senate File twenty-six.
That's what Steve was talking about.
I talked about that.
Had to do where carved out TIF, so they couldn't use TIF money to take away from EMS if you got voted as an essential service, is basically what it's.
So I just kinda.
Wasn't you gonna check on too about TIF, there were some TIF that have been in.
Oh, yeah. Twenty years.
For years and years and years.
Yep, that's, I think they're working on that, it says specific county that has that, uh, Senate File ninety-two, talked about eminent domain. I just kinda went through some of the, um, different of things that they're working on, uh, utilities and permits, Medicaid funding, a House File thirteen, annual updates. Not a paper sheet, but I had more notes on, but I must have left it.
I was kinda surprised that there wasn't more, I mean, now.
Or legislators there?
Well, I'm darn sure surprised to that, maybe, but since we're bad people, I guess I understand.
We're still hard on nice.
Yeah, anyway, uh, uh. What was I gonna say? Thanks, Dave, appreciate that.
Well, then Dawson did talk about, um, property tax reform, Senator Dawson out on Council Bluffs, and he's kind of the. Lead on all these property tax changes, he was the lead on House File seven eighteen, and he, he used modernization quite a bit, and kept talking about. Modernizing from the twentieth century to twenty-first century for property tax reform and this and that, and, um, he really.
No role.
Didn't give us any, uh, anything specific that they're looking at, tweaking now, just that they're continuing, looking at.
I had a notebook.
I think they're working on it, they're sorting through stuff where they can do, you know, I mean, I don't think that, I don't think that there's, I don't know there anybody at this table that's not looking to lower property taxes. I think they gotta look at the whole big picture, you know, it seems. Didn't it seem like seven eighteen was directed more at our table? I mean, it was directed mainly at our table, and, I mean, I, I, I never wanna shortchange our school systems from doing a great job, because. They're building tomorrow for America, I mean, so it's important, but that is our biggest tax asking entity in the county, and I would assume in any county. We do got a public hospital that takes money, and there's wherever they're gonna go. We've got like the assessor, you know, that has its own, the conference board, and, and basically, that one's accepted automatic, that's what they vote on. That's its own tax asking entity, and they wanted to do that with E M A, I'm against that. I still think everything should come across your supervisor board. I still think it, cuz we, not the commission, now, the people are all elected officials on that commission, that's a good thing, but. We are the ones that are elected to speak on behalf of the people and their money, not our money, their money. And I think that that's why sometimes these budgets get a little haywire, is because we don't have, no, you can't spend that on that this year. I mean, you know, it's just like, you know, like with Zach, you know, he's gonna be here for, and this is his dream job, he stated it loudly, you know? So he's gonna be here for twenty-five or thirty years, you know, so let's, we don't need to do it all this year. So I mean, this board is probably the best board to say, that's a great idea, but we can't afford it this year. You see what I mean? So I mean, that makes that commission go back, say, okay, we gotta real, we gotta reevaluate our priorities, you know? I think that that checks and balances is important, that's what the United States was founded on, is checks and balances, you know, I hear about it whenever I post on Facebook, you know? And it's true, so I think that that's one of the places that I wanted to go with that is. I don't think that we, uh, need to do away with certain things like that, we need to have more of them, or we need to maintain what we have, you know, I don't think we. E M A, that, that one was bothering me, that if they would take that away.
Basically, E M A would be its own commission, just like the Congress Board, EMS.
Or EMS.
Not E M A. No, 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 this was.
They were talking E M A.
Oh, they were, oh, yeah, I would say the EMS thing is now.
Yeah, the, you're talking about the essential service thing, yeah, they're, they're talking about carving out E M A.
Got it.
Separately.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, it could be, uh, yeah.
Right, cuz now you do have a say, cuz you fund it.
Right.
You know, you, you get to authorize that funding.
Exactly, and they're talking about altering it, so I don't, I don't, I'm not.
I don't know.
What's the benefit of modernizing it that way?
I think it's to make sure that it has adequate funds that aren't being TIF'd or something like that.
Getting the political side out of it, much like they did probably with public health, or they would take the political aspect out of it.
How well does that work? When they get runaway budgets, you know?
They talked about blank checks.
So, I'm, that's, that was kinda some of the things we discussed that I.
Senate, Senate File twenty-six is where you can go look at that, essential service, uh, new levy, not to go into TIF, voter said yes for a specific, uh, purpose. Uh, calls to change it to declare it a municipality, uh, go to a taxing authority, gives a mixed message, something about blank check, or just my notes. So we hit.
But that's the thing, why they're, why they're telling us to cut property taxes, you can't do things that actually increase them. You know, that's my point.
Yeah.
That's the end of the point.
That was thinking.
That was a long ways to get to that, but there you go. I mean, I think, I think that we do, you know, we were talking with one of the elected officials this morning earlier. You know, about alternative sources, you know, more, more direct revenue streams that are paid by the people that actually need that particular service. And it's beneficial, because then we can turn around and cut property taxes to help facilitate those things. Farm Bureau was behind a, a little tax, nothing big, but a, a tax on farm fuel, but we couldn't get anybody above county level to say that that, all that money should come back to secondary roads on the local level. Because that's where the farmers are, the people that would be doing the majority of paying for that farm fuel. And that money, if it was spent here, we could lower property tax.
D O T just wants to keep it, or D O T wants to say.
Well, I think they wanna say where it goes, you know, I mean, that's the problem I had with that then, you know, and that, that, that's the alternative source of revenue to help take care of. Our big, the biggest part of our budget, which is secondary roads, and so we could lower property tax all the way around. If we had another revenue stream to help purchase gravel, you know, or whatever the case may be.
That one never got off the ground, because that was a caveat, Farm Bureau, majority of farmers were, that's fine tax, my farm diesel just, I wanna know that it stays in my.
Stays local. And that's the thing is, them are the things, as we're talking about cutting property taxes, we still have all these services to provide, so we have to find ways. To make the people that use them help fund them, so I, to me, that's some stuff that needs, you know.
Want to hear my notes on property tax reform? No clear vision, unfunded mandates, who pays? Two question marks.
Well, you just alluded to both.
And supposedly, using the term unfunded mandates does not gain you any ground with the legislators, because it's just a.
Take that out of your book, Uncle Larry.
Yeah, that just. It's not something to track from, even wanting to listen to us.
No such thing.
They don't wanna. Should've rephrased that then, this.
As modernization.
Everything they do in the last year and a half or so is, is great, but it only affects, like you said, it affects this table, it don't affect their way they spend. Because if it did, they wouldn't be out putting Brian on the highway today.
Yeah, you dredge, good point, good point.
They'd be more conservative with their Brian. But they're just willingly flowing that stuff up. But you talk to Michael Rosie, though, but if you need a roll of toilet paper out of skate shed, you have to go down to Ames and beg for it. But they can just, very nice.
Wow.
But if they got Brian, they just can waste.
Well, they do something in the name of safety. They're backside of them to save, so.
Well, I mean, granted, but.
I don't know.
There's gotta be a happy medium, I mean, we gotta.
And we gotta find, we gotta find, we gotta find a way to.
Without them willing to listen to us.
That actually worked.
And without them willing to listen to us, and we have the services we have to provide. And I don't know how we're gonna continue to provide them without having the dollars to provide them.
Did you pick up, though? The, when they were talking about it, they get, they, they, they have this same discussion in their rooms about the federal government.
Oh, I'm sure.
Unfunded mandates, did you, did you gather that? I did too, you know, so that's probably why they're not so good at listening to us, cuz they have the same complaints about the federal government. And the unfunded mandates that get thrown at them from the federal level, so I don't know.
Our problem is we can't pass the buck anywhere.
Yeah, the buck stops here.
We could do the cities, but I mean. Can't squeeze blood for dry.
I would say the one difference between the federal and state, and state and us is that they may have unfunded mandates, but they are still sitting on five billion dollars. We have unfunded mandates from the state, and our budget is shoestring tight.
I would say most, you know, most are, yeah.
But at the end of the day, they're all talking about the same people, there isn't a different, uh, group of people that are given to the federal, the state, and the county, it's all the same people. It's all the same population, there's not.
It's we, the people.
Yeah, they all are fun, yeah, it's like they're, you think about it, they're talking about the same people, only at different levels, and it affects them all.
And I know, the, the only, the one thing that I just, I'm, I'm getting a little more frustrated with is I don't know how. That we're supposed to talk to them that way, and if we aren't communicating, this is not gonna get better. I mean, we, we gotta work together on this.
Talking and listening are two different things, you, you can talk to them, but are they listening?
Well, hearing and listening are two different.
All right, hearing, listening, talking.
What did I tell you on the phone the other day about my girl sergeant, day one?
Yeah.
What he said to me, I'll never forget that, he said, you're, apparently your mom and your senators have been calling saying we can't talk to you like that, but they're not here.
Yeah, they definitely weren't there.
We're gonna talk to you how we want to. It was affected.
It would be interesting if my mom showed up, I could get to figure out how many pushups she can eat.
I was glad my mom wasn't there.
Yeah, no kidding.
Me too.
But yeah, that's about all I got, I mean, I didn't really have any other meetings, you know, not, well, I had some.
Oh, we're still in your section.
Yeah, I think so, well, we were kinda sharing, it was kind of a mutual thing, since it was a.
Sorry.
I still have my mug, still on my notebook.
Did you guys see the I T SWAT teams coming in, and they're gonna do, uh, assessment on Friday at ten o'clock? We need to know who's all coming.
SWAT team? SWAT team?
That's what we call them.
I C I T.
I C I P, they're gonna do the second assessment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if we have more than two, we're, we need to have a.
I can't be here.
You'd have gone.
I can be here, I put that on.
Yep, Kyle and Craig are both on here.
I can, I can't.
Friday at ten.
Yes, I can be here.
I'd like to hear what.
And you're here, okay, so we will do an agenda.
I can be here.
And it'll be for a closed session.
Friday at ten, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'll be here Thursday, I'm already committed myself.
Oh, you are, okay.
Did you find a door for Louise's?
I called yesterday, and, uh, they had just gotten back from their vacation, and they were gonna put me up top of their list, and I didn't hear. Uh, so I'm hoping to hear this morning, when, I don't know, it's just a door, should be coming, I would guess, but, uh.
Right, it's not like she can't move in without the door, right?
I, uh, I did a lot of, uh, bowing back.
I gave her her hug the other day when she had.
Yeah.
We had a door. Now, that's, I, she's, she's ready to move in, her, her people want her to move in, and it's time to.
Furniture is gonna be together.
I understand.
Yep.
The floor needs cleaned and something.
I'm gonna call JP. And just see what they would recommend for a deep clean, uh, you know, there, I guess there's some scratches in the front lobby that kinda happened with, uh, I'm not sure.
Moving stuff around, I think we got an extra box of tile.
And they say it's real easy to pop them in, in and out, so, you know.
Well, we did some.
Maybe we can get more if we need them, I guess.
We should probably get it before it possibly goes out of stock, too, if we think we're gonna need a couple of, uh, extra.
Should we start this, this discussion on what we're gonna do with D H S over there?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that might be important to do, I mean, are we gonna need a little, will we be able to put them in that conference area, or how are we gonna do? I mean, cuz they're, they'll, they'll, whatever we're giving them, they're coming in to evaluate its value, for what they'll pay, that seven fifty may be left or more.
You know, uh, in the beginning, I, when I had taken them down there, I, uh, kinda showed them one of the rooms that was a dentist examining room, and they said that that would be fine, because they know, like, it's COVID. They don't need a, uh, a file cabinet, they have everything on their laptops, and so they don't need as much space as they, they need, they used to need.
Would that be a shared space?
They use a shared space, that wasn't going to be a shared, at that time, it was gonna be mental health and, uh.
We don't really have a mental health there, do we?
Well, well, we still, hopefully, will have an advocate that comes to Crawford County, needs to sit down and talk to somebody, so I still wanna have a space that they have.
So that, that room, that big room, will be multi.
Correct, they have tables there, and, uh, and.
We'll have to make sure there's like a desk.
Yep, yep, the other backup would possibly be that middle area where there, it was a, uh, there's gonna be a TV in there for a zoomer, and they're gonna move that around to the other side. But they could have that, this used to be a break room, but they, I pointed that out, and they said that would also work, we just have to coordinate when they needed it, and so it would be a kind of a shared space. And we have a couple of, uh, things depending on.
Moving forward.
Yep, moving, oh, we, uh, yes, getting.
We're modern, modern, there you go.
Uh, yeah, we could, we could talk about that later.
Paul, good morning.
Good morning.
Sunshine, no snow, how much better can you.
No flies.
We still got them damn little beetles.
Yep, yep.
I don't know where they come from. Those little ladybug beetles.
I've noticed a bunch of them moving in on that sixty-degree day again.
Yes.
Do they kind of come out of hibernation, or does that work? Them are the stinkiest little son of a guns, too, don't squirt them.
They'll go outside.
Yeah, okay, well, I had a whole lot of new stuff here today, um, I did send you all an email, uh, update on our, uh, possible, you know, transaction that we're looking at, so. That, that, you've all got an update, I kinda summed it up and everything, so you have that. The, uh, projects are, are moving forward in the lettings, um, the guys are out basically brush cutting, hauling some mag or yet, uh, moving some things around and. Getting equipment taken care of, shops, and, you know, it's, um, I'm, it's some bleeding, you know, we've had some nice weather, doing some bleeding, so.
Looked like they were doing quite a bit yesterday over there, so.
Yeah, yeah, they're working, the bridge crew's working over there, too, so, um.
Karen was out on X Avenue the other day, and it really bleeding up nice.
Oh, it does, you know, we get those fifty-degree days, I mean, we've had some nice weather, this has been a good winter, we'll pay for it, yeah.
Winter's not over.
Yeah, well, you know, it isn't, but you get into this time of the year, the days are longer, the sun's a little, a little more. Yeah. Well, you know, it isn't, but you get into this time of the year, the days are longer, the sun's a little, a little more. Or, yeah, I should say the days longer, the daylight's longer. Somebody corrected me on that one. The days are 24 hours. The sunshine is longer. So, but anyhow, uh, so, uh, yeah, it's been good, you know, and, and, you know, when people say, well, you're saving, and we do save money because you can do other things. You're not pushing snow. Pushing snow, you know, is a necessary thing, but it's like driving down the road with the window open, throwing a hundred dollar bills out as fast as you can. Because that's what happens. It's gone and it's never gonna be recovered again. So if you're not spending that now, you know, you, you save that for later. And you use that, those dollars in some other area. Um, you know, in the salt arena, you know, I've been talking to Ben and Tim about it is you have to order our salt in April and May for the following year. You put it in and they bid it and then, you know, so you, you gotta kind of be a little bit of a wizard to kind of, well, or a. I don't know what they call them, but to try to fortune teller.
Best of all.
To, to figure out what you need. And, you know, generally in the past, we've been using 1,200 ton of salt. And that was kind of that normal number. We order a thousand ton and maybe 1,200. I mean, two years, the, this year I ordered 800, the two before that I only ordered 600. You know, one of these days it's gonna catch up with us and we're gonna get a bad winter and we are. Uh, and then you just gotta make sure you got it there. So, you know, and you have to take 80% of your order. You can take up to 110% of your orders, so.
How much shrink do we have in salt over the course of a year?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you exactly, you know. I kind of figured it'd be a hard number. I just wondered.
Yeah, I, I couldn't figure it out.
I, I don't know that it's a whole lot. I mean, you know, it's.
Well, every time you would get, gather moisture.
Moisture probably has a little bit. It gets hard is what it does. That's what probably our biggest issue is. It starts to. Yeah, get pumps and you gotta break out, but, you know, it's just one of those things. So we're gonna be sitting full of salt. Yeah, unless something changes, and I hope it doesn't, then we just sits there.
Okay.
But those are kind of some of the things because we provide to the city, which they use as much as we do on their streets. And so, you know, and then on.
How much can we inventory from one year to the next?
We can, we can hold probably around a thousand ton. Yeah, that we'd be sitting on for, you know, through the summer months if we don't, you know, because we're, we're, we're gonna be full.
It's a good problem to have.
It's a great problem to have. Yeah, it really is. So, um, but it's just something you gotta kind of manage, you know, you gotta make sure you got it.
Salt gets cheaper either. I mean, most everything gets more expensive. So if I got inventory.
Yeah. I said, you never want to run out of food at a wedding. You never want to run out of salt in winter. Good way to happen. So, um, the, uh, bridge crew, they finished the dock out there. It's a really nice project. If you get a chance, go out and take a look at it. Um, I think they did a really good job and it didn't take them very long to do it either. So, but most of the cost there is gonna be the materials. There's a lot of plank material and stuff, but very nice project. So guys did a good job on that. Um, items, uh, four and five there. I'm gonna let Ben kind of take over, um, on that. Um, I don't know if you want it.
Well, dust control agreements, we could have, uh, five vendors that have provided applications to become approved vendors. That to apply dust control in the county. The same five is what we have last year. We, uh, we, uh, once approved, we'll put their forms up online on our website for, so go to our website. We'll have their contact information there and their application forms for signing up for dust control on our website. And, uh, we request that they, uh, provide us with a list of recipients by April 20, April 25th. And, uh, that flag has been placed by, uh, by April 25th. So we, uh, we have our list, so we know what sites we need to shape up. And, um, you know, there's always a couple here and there that they'll, we'll call them, can we get this one on the list after fact? But, uh, we're not trying to work with everybody a little bit in that respect, but, uh, in general, we try to maintain some consistency in that respect. So.
Did we have any complaints about any of our providers?
There's always a couple, you know, that, uh, but in general, not, not, not too bad. But I think it was pretty consistent across the board. I know there's a couple that we've noticed, you know, looked a lot better than others, but, uh, you know, that's a.
But all, all the process with five different vendors is pretty smooth for prepping it and it went well.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, like I said, we, we give them a two week timeframe to, to do the application. That's just to kind of have some, some organization to it, uh, instead of, uh, trying to go out there, shape, uh, you know, one provider, one vendor's sites, uh, have to come back, uh, at a different time to shape up some other sites. We're gonna shape them all up, but within those two weeks or ahead of those two weeks and have it applied at that time. That way, uh, not chasing the tail out there.
And it's up to the individual citizen to pick which of the five vendors to choose from.
Right, right. Yep, it's, it's entirely a choice by them. Uh, they can explore the rates of, uh, the different providers and, uh, and make their own decisions.
You know, are they all the same price?
I guess I haven't really explored their prices. See how they compare. Uh, it, it's gonna be, uh, you know, they'll have a minimum length associated with some of them, you know, or minimum. Some of them are minimum of 200 feet that they'll want to have applied an additional amount per 50 foot or what have you, but that. It's just one of those things you have to price out, but I guess I haven't looked at their pricing all that closely to, you know, they're not, one compares better than the other, I guess.
It's still up to the individual citizen to pick the company they choose.
We're careful not to make recommendations so we don't get sued.
There you go.
Well, I get it.
Yeah.
Been down that road.
Carl moved to approve the 2025 dust control applicator agreements.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair goes aye.
Just want to add, you know, kind of moving forward, you know, we, we used to just have one vending, you know, I think pretty much everyone has a way with the history. This hasn't worked out too bad. As long as you've got that agreement in place to have some control. You know, you may get to the point where I doubt, I don't know that other counties do that. We did it because of the situation we found ourselves in and making sure.
I like the fact that we put it on the website so they just have to go to one website. They don't have to try to find all the companies.
And, and that's true. They, they, they'll have that option. The person can make their individual choice. But the agreement then that we're, you know, taking action on today holds that applicator, you know, if you're gonna work in Crawford County, here's how you're gonna do it.
Right.
Otherwise they're spending our tax dollar on fuel and depreciation on equipment and hours that the drivers are trying to chase around if they aren't put in order.
Well, it kind of prevents too that, that kind of that cowboy that might go out there and just say, well, I'm gonna just go put something on myself. You don't really allow that. You have to be an approved applicator. And so, you know, obviously if somebody does something.
At least then we can have an idea of what they're putting.
We have the way to, yeah, to control it.
The detour, the closure from the detour, that's used for both, you know, the route.
You have a map?
Yeah.
Just.
Straight down on, uh, it's right there on the city trail there.
There you go.
At the intersection of 35 and, uh, Highway 30. Detour taking in around the, the, uh, down to S Avenue and back over to where you need to go with M 55 there. It will be the official detour.
Official.
We have, uh, we've approved a detour signage fund with the DOT. They've approved the, the detour route and, uh, and, uh, they can, uh, take advantage of the nice days to get some batteries in the ground for the signage to, so they do get an early start to, we could get signed and get up. But, uh, that is the route.
I'll make a motion to approve the detours for the M 55 bridge.
A motion?
Second.
Three seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing on all. Resolution. Kyle.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chair goes aye. Ocean Mass.
I gotta get a stamp. Thank you.
All right.
The hard part of the closing, yeah, 35 gets screened there, uh, the south bridge there.
You want those down in here.
And the rest of your street, so it's open to your traffic.
Thank you.
But yeah, we, uh, not a high volume, but we just face, of course, people finding their way around. And try to possibly minimize the noise of the way fighters around the detour as possible.
So that, that map along with a letter Ben will be sending out to people in that vicinity. Making them aware that there's a project that's gonna be done this summer. So it's always good to give them a little advance notice and so that they can kind of plan accordingly.
I don't know if you want that date to say 2025.
Should say 2025, yeah. Let's go find my checks.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Correct it? Hard to do. It's only in the air. We'll get that scanned back to you guys. A copy of it. Oh, sure. Awesome. Thanks.
Uh, travel, everybody's gonna be using.
It's a hard one.
3:30.
Yeah.
It's a hard one to get around.
By the way around it, they're, they're have to.
That 3:30 is gonna get a lot of traffic. Need a little extra rock on that one there.
So while we're talking about detours, um, Ben and Damon met with, um, the DOT yesterday on the Highway 30 detour that's proposed. And there'll be an agreement that I'll have him bring up next week to approve the use of our route for the detour. So you can see, you know, we need to use Highway 30 for our traffic on this project. And so, um, we'll, they'll, they'll be, uh, well, you know, using the bug row pages for their project. And, uh, you know, so I don't know if you wanna give them an update on that meeting again with Kirk.
Both, both are, we, we visited with, uh, Kirk Johnson, Jim Albers and, uh, forgive me, I'm gonna draw a line on that, Chris Jepson. Uh, down, down city, uh, regarding what routes, which it's gonna be obvious what routes everybody's gonna take around their closure. It's gonna be, uh, going up Kellin Road and over on the area, have come through area and, uh, people circling on the E 59, cutting over right up to, uh, same as they have heard of the last, um, they detoured when they closed, uh, 59. Those two areas are gonna catch the full brunt of, uh, of, of the traffic and find their way around. Of course, the approved route's gonna be, uh, E 59, no over two Highway 59. But, uh, I anticipate a large majority of that traffic is gonna find their way around the gravel. It's just too easy to cut over, uh, take two miles of gravel and be right back on route. The way visited with them in length as far as dust control in front of the residents that are gonna catch the full brunt of that. And, uh, not a lot of them, but, uh, they're gonna work with us very well, trying to get dust control in front of them places. They drove, uh, drove out yesterday to see about how long in front of their, the residents we're gonna go. A stretch coming into, uh, area, uh, to try and to keep the dust coming in, blowing into, into town as they, as if they take that approach and, uh, so.
So wind will bring a lot.
Yeah, and, uh, right, right up Highway there where they're gonna be going off of tour attempt, uh, they're coming on, uh, back on the Highway 30 to keep the dust from blowing across there. But, uh, by and large, they're, they're gonna try and keep ahead of the dust control, work with us to keep that applying. We'll, we'll line up the dust control and, and, uh, submit for reimbursement at the, at the project or something. But, uh, it sounds to me that they're, they're gonna be good to work with in that respect. They, they understand that those route dogs are gonna get.
We got them twice.
A lot of traffic.
We got them coming up twice.
Something else, like again, they, they realize that this is gonna be happening again right then, 2028 or, or whatever that next closure is gonna be. So. Really, the long and short of the discussion yesterday is dust control for the residents that are impacted the most.
Still better to have a good bridge than one that's falling in.
It is maybe a two to three month project. So it, it's gonna take a little bit, but.
I also kind of talked to them about, you know, we always talk about dust, but this is gonna be doing March, April, May, uh, and, you know, so my, my concern, my bigger concern, you know, is what's gonna happen if the road just starts to fall apart. Um, you know, because there's where we spend real money. And so, uh, you know, they, they made it clear we don't have any capacity to, you know, to buy material for you, but they're willing to work with us, um, in some, some fashion to try to get something worked out there. So.
What kind of fashion would that be? I mean, we're obviously gonna have to buy.
Some of their ma, some of their maintenance material, you know, would come over there. Yeah, is what they would try to do. I don't, I don't want to get anybody in trouble.
Okay.
The, the people we've been working with have been really good, you know, but they're somewhat limited, they're somewhat limited in what they can do. So. Um, but anyhow, I know I didn't have that on here, but I just wanted to give you an update because then we'll have to sign off on that detour agreement.
You're facing slopes on them heavier gravel. It'll be beat up in March.
Not good. If it rains a lot in April, which I've heard it's supposed to, um, you know, and we're gonna get, this, our moisture is gonna get made up somewhere along the way.
So we hope.
Who knows what'll happen. But if it starts to rain for a week and all that's traffic's trying to go up those gravel roads, it's not gonna be good. So.
Well, we did have them try to use the dirt roads during rain just from this last year.
Yeah.
They'll try.
I know that project's scheduled to start, uh, like we've planned here and, and we are gonna be sending all their, again, to, yeah. The folks that, uh, we've identified as receiving dust control and are gonna be, I'm not sure how much awareness they have of projects that have to make them aware if they have those, uh, they can, they can, they can as much as we can. Send a letter up to them just today or something. Not much notice, but.
Yeah.
The other project I want to talk about is the HMA project on 141. The pre-construction conference for that's next week. And, uh, I suspect if the conditions are fit, they'll start on that as soon as possible. Uh, a lot of that's milling, the shoulders out and paving. So as soon as the frost is out, probably we'd be getting going on that right away. Uh, you know, we did rent the Sleswig Yard out to the contractor. Uh, so, um, you know, for $35,000 for however long they're gonna be there. Um, and, um, and then, and which is, I don't expect to be more than two or three months for the project. So, uh, so that project will be starting up probably first thing as soon as weather conditions are fit, or what I'm being told. Winter's gone just like that.
Yeah. That Sleswig lot just keeps.
Yeah, that's.
Like a jelly of the month club.
That's the fourth time we would have leased it.
Yeah.
That works out great.
So. For a total of a hundred and $26,000.
Usually just two or three months is all they're there.
Return on value is what I call that.
But it's paid for, it's paid for the property. The, uh, I have six there. So, um, we got two quotes, one from Ziegler and one from Mid Country. Ziegler was right at 82,000 for each of the machines, 82 and 81 eight. And then Mid Country was. And then Mid Country was at sixty nine, so Ziegler's going to get the trades, it'll work out good, when they bring the new machines in May, the old ones will go. And again, you know, the, the, I'm, I'm not trying to push, I'm just letting you know that the sooner we can get, if we're going to move on the semi tractor trailer. You know, to get them here, to get them used. And yeah, Tim's going to be taking care of a lot of the equipment stuff, um, you know, it's just, let me know, or let him know. We've got proposals from both of them, it's just a matter of signing off on them and moving forward, I know you're still in budget discussion, so. I'm, but I'm just going to keep that on there until you tell me either yes or no.
If we do go with them, um. Do you get them the timeframe of?
Uh, well, I have to kind of go back and check, you know, because bill dates are filling up on the tractor, the trailer is probably not as much of a problem as getting the tractor, you know. But we're probably looking at this year July timeframe right now, so.
Hey, you definitely around putting a guy in there and you put it rolling?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I can give them an update on the guys, we.
We just hired you two part-time employees to help run trucks, semis, with trailers, side dumps, whatever we bill need for them to help out. Um, and then we hired one part-time bridge crew personnel that went up the bridge crew route, it's, you know, a man short, but. Still doing a lot of progress and stuff like that, so.
Two people sure.
Two, two personnel sort of.
From what we had.
From what we, from what I started, it was, you know, way down two personnel, full-time personnel. But hopefully those all. Help fill some of the slots and want to keep rolling with that.
So bad. We're one of those few governmental agencies. Actually trying to do more or less.
But we got to sit down and find a life thing, Paul, yeah, we got to find two. And go through things, you know, and find you a homeowner and like, it's just kind of.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, I understand, yeah. And, and like I've always told you, you know, if, if you don't, I mean, this doesn't break my heart, it's just a matter of business, you know, trying to move things. Um, because if you want to get it, you know, the sooner we can get it coming, the better, uh, if we're not, you know what? Uh, like I've always said, whatever money we have, our job is to try to spend that as efficiently as possible. Yeah, but we got a lot of good use for it.
How about a good used truck?
How about a good used truck?
Yeah.
We can look into that too, yeah.
No option, I mean, I'm not, I mean, new is the best.
We, we, we bought some.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, that, that, that's certainly an option.
Save a little.
So. Well, you lose, you lose warranty and all those kind of things.
You're going to want that new warranty with those death issues and such like that, that's always going to come with the new.
Yeah, the thing is, we're, we're going to put a lot of miles on it, you know.
Oh, yeah.
And we already have.
I mean, and we keep them a long time, dude.
Yeah, yeah. So. We get the good.
But you can, I mean, to, to your point, you can buy used, we could buy used anything, uh, you know, we typically, because we buy it, we use it and. I guess one of my point was is, if the, the budget's so tight that. Are we set, have we put ourselves with the hiring of help? Is it detrimental that we need another tractor to keep help busy or, or?
No.
Okay.
I think we'll keep them busy. Keep them busy, yeah, but this would just be better.
Yeah, the big thing is there is like semis are going to be off of like a ditching crew or a bridge crew to help move equipment around, but. We're used to that, we're switching around, helping each other out, uh, using twenty seven, that's the, the goat, you know, semi that we got.
Goat. Is that the use of all time?
It is, it is. I would, I love that truck, that thing's.
Bill board?
You should get, you should get a plaque made, I wonder how many CDLs that truck is, uh.
We were buying that Ford Dodge, we bought that up in Ford Dodge, John Lawler. But that's.
So that new truck would actually go into the full-time semi driver, the trucks would tick, they're all bound, just like they always have to pass. And then fill in vacancies of older trucks. I guess I just didn't want to be like, oh, that truly threw a wrench into our whole plan of the summer attack of hauling gravel or whatever, we didn't have a truck. If we get a used truck to get us by this summer would be. The. But we'll see how the budget goes.
We'll see how things.
Sounds good.
Very good, and I will be gone, so you guys will be getting care of the meetings the next couple of weeks, so.
Sounds good.
Alright, you know, get a hold of it.
Thanks for coming up, guys.
Call anytime, seriously, you got anything, and if you've got a minute, when you get done, I just want to do it with you.
Yeah, yeah, I'll pop down.
Yeah, sounds good, thanks.
See you guys.
I don't have one.
Good hope you go to it on us.
Yeah, party for you guys.
You are?
Yeah.
What's that? Hi, I'm Al Lawson from Manila, Mississauga.
You can hope, Al, you can take seats. Now you come, come right up here.
Yeah, don't come on down.
We all have our shots.
He can take the shot.
Um, I'm here to represent Manila Economic Development. And Manila Economic Development. Is kind of help get the Manila Wellness Center going. Um, I don't know if you want any history or not, I can give it to you if you want. Manila Economic Development was basically set up, uh, I don't know if you're aware, but uh, the utilities in the city. Bought some property on the outskirts of Manila and developed it into a, a housing addition. Uh, the lots are free, utilities are there. So people, it was, it was a drive to try to get people to move into Manila, is what it's about.
It worked.
Yeah.
It worked very well.
Yeah, it's been successful. Anyway, we don't, we give the lot space, so we don't make any money at it, but we supervise the sale and make sure, you know, we have. Covenant, the house is supposed to be built, certain pitch in the road, supposed to have a basement, supposed to be so many square foot, you know, we didn't want trailers moving in there, double eight trailers. Anyway, uh, and then when. Uh. The disappointing event of our school closing, um. We purchased the school from the. School district, Manila Economic Development, and then of course that included the, the gym and the, the old building and the elementary, well, since then. We started a wellness center in the gym. And you know how long ago that's been?
It'll be ten years this fall.
So, and basically we, we started with nothing and uh. And then the other positive thing that's happened is uh, Economic Development sold. The elementary wing to the daycare, so we have a daycare now too, so it's, it's been a positive thing. We kind of tried to turn a negative into a positive with that.
You charge a fee to your clients for the, for them to use the wellness center, or is it free?
Uh, we have memberships.
You do charge memberships?
It's two hundred dollars a year for a family, a hundred dollars a year for a single. And we currently have. Uh, eighty, eighty-two memberships, fifty-three of those are family, twenty-nine of those are single.
And you do different classes there too, I think.
Yeah, we have, if you bear with me, we have, these are activities, we have June night, girls and boys basketball in there right now, we have practicing games. We have youth volleyball, we have youth basketball, we have shooting star basketball. Exercise for seniors, we have the craft fair, we have a church group that uses it about twice a year. We have pickleball now, we have spin class. Yeah, after prom party, as you did, uh, the cash party after the school plays, you did, we've even had birthday parties in there. So, those are, you know, besides people coming in and exercising, those are some of the big group things we have over.
And if you're a member, you, uh, you have a card that opens the door and it's twenty-four seven at home, you know. So, because we have people like come in at six, five in the morning, you got something. Late at night, we have two training rooms with training equipment, then of course we have the gym.
Can a person go in there and just kind of walk around, do people do that, just?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. A lot of people walk in there in the winter.
Be it like treadmills or what, free weights?
Uh, yeah. And uh. Like I said, we, Jeanette said we have a spin class, so we've got spin bikes in there, so. Anyway, uh. Reason we're here is uh. We, we do a pretty good job of keeping that operation movement or going, you know, financially, but when it comes to infrastructure stuff, it, it's uh. It's a struggle, we've applied for what, many grants?
We have received eight grants for a total of sixty-two thousand dollars over the ten years.
Over ten years, so. Uh, we, we, we are working to get money, but we run into infrastructure issues like. We've had some minor roof issues, but you, you know, that it. You know how roofs are, after so long, they're, they're not good and um, so that's what we're concerned with and um. Not here to beg it for money or anything, but if, you know, I know that you supported the one here in Denison, which I totally agree with. Um, but we're well in the center too, I think we, we contributed a lot to the community in Manila. And, and the area and there's everyone people that use it, we got defiance people that come up and use it, so um. Just let you know, we're out there, basically, and, and um, like I. Had uh, an HVAC firm that I dealt with when I was working a job core, they put in a bid for AC because we. We've had people that, especially in the fitness room in the summer, it's just deadly hot and or. And you know, complete AC. Uh, upgrade to the building would be around seventy thousand. And um, I got figures if you want, but, and then we had uh. Uh, the roofing company called it a budgetary estimate, where the HVAC is an actual what it would cost. But the budgetary estimate for all the roof, roofing, because we have, you know, they split it up into several. Different areas, but you know, we've got an approach area, then you got the main gym, and then we've got locker rooms, and then we have. A fitness room, and then actually there's a garage that's connected to the north end of the building, we, we rent that out to a contractor, he keeps his supplies in there. Anyway, just uh.
Al, have you had any luck, have you reached out to REE twelve at all, have you got any grants for them?
Uh, we haven't, we haven't talked to them, no, I'm just getting this process started, I've had trouble getting estimates, which.
I, I don't know if any are available or not, but I'll pass you on Chris Whitaker's number as well.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, if there is, he'd be the one.
Yeah.
Helping with that.
And like I said, we're not here to. Expect anything, we just want you to know that we're around and if, if you guys felt it was appropriate to. Help us out, we greatly appreciate it.
Which we are in our budgeting meetings right now, so good time.
Was that roofing estimate, do you have a number?
Yeah.
Associated with that?
I can give you information if you guys want.
Well, I just was going to know, if you had a.
Yeah, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, which I think is totally ridiculous.
So that's for the entire project?
Yeah, and that's, and part of that is the company I talked to, you know, it's a rubber, they do rubber roofs, okay?
That, that, that's for the whole roof or just the?
Oh, you've got it broke down on?
Yeah, anyway, I, I'll hand these out, but anyway, but part of our roof has been foam. So if, if you do a rubber roof, those companies, they have to tear off all of it, or remove all the foam and then they start over. Where if we would decide to do a roofing, a foam company, that would, it would be a lot different, but I had to start somewhere, you know, because I've been. Talking to USDA a little bit too, but that's kind of in an uproar, I, would you guys like these?
I mean, I got, I think I got five copies.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Here you need one for sure, they have the.
You gotta ask, Jeanette, how many hours do you think you spent around gym over the years? Jeanette was our longtime teacher at Manila.
I taught forty years. A couple of years, we're just straight for the one, and the last year was Manning.
What, what he did.
Long time since you had me in a jamboree in Manila.
There's several different sections. And you can see there, and then he estimated each section, which. And he, he made it very clear to me that, that this was a budgetary estimate, and his, he said, so it is high.
Did they tell you their, your area of biggest need, which?
Well, right, right now, probably the biggest need would be the fitness area, which is that area. We've had some minor leaks up here.
Kickball right here.
That's it.
Thirty-one thousand.
Luckily, right now, we were, we were fortunate enough, someone donated. The money to refinish our gym floor.
Nice.
Which really.
Turned out nice.
Turned out nice, and it brightened the whole place up, and, and so we, we certainly don't, don't want the roof leak.
No.
So, and there's other things I've, I've seen. Advertisements for companies that coat roofs, they have a spray coating on the roof, and they claim it'll last. Twenty years, you know how that goes, you can claim anything, so.
So I guess prioritize, if you had to pick, I mean, heat, HVAC, and roofing, which uh.
Probably start with the fitness area, which is.
Thirty-one thousand. Is that what he said, for the roof?
The two thousand square foot area, which is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's the.
Thirty-one thousand.
Well, that workout room.
Yeah, those are, those were two classrooms in the school days and we, we turned them into our fitness rooms. That's where the, the cycling class is and. Anyway, but probably if there was priority would be that area, don't you think, Jeanette?
Yeah. Either that or the lobby, but we don't, my feeling is. I'm worried that the, the gym, the gym itself, when it starts leaking, it's going to start leaking bad, you know, and it's going to be our high dollar item and. I've not been up there, but I've seen the changes, digital changes, and that's my worry, but I go, I'm not a roofer, so I don't know, especially with your floor.
And, and he, uh, in fairness to the roofing company, uh. They did their estimate from these area photos.
Sure.
You know, because it's winter time, they didn't actually get up and, and inspect the roofs and all that, so. But anyway, like I said, I just, yes, we wanted you guys aware that we're around and. Certainly not expecting anything, but if something could happen, it'd be great.
We have extra jingle in your pocket just so you know.
But I, uh, I started a process with USDA, um, but that's kind of, the person I was dealing with is no longer there, he was an avoided person, so, you know, that has changed, so. Um, trying to get back in connection with them too, and you know, about possibility of, so.
Al, do you have funds available or the city or fund drive if something major did happen tomorrow? Would you be able to?
We, we don't have anything started down, no. I don't know if that's where I went wrong, but, you know.
That's one thing that I've seen over the years, we have to be able to put money and wait for that rainy day type idea.
Yeah, we, our budget, you know, with, with our membership, and we haven't really been able to do that, but, you know, we're applying for a grant again now and, and uh. We're not going to quit applying for grants and anything like that.
The membership probably just keeps the lights on in the regular maintenance.
Yeah, right, right.
Do you have uh, like staff at all, like somebody that teaches the spin class or things like that, or is it everybody kind of on their own or?
The spin class, we have two instructors, they, they kind of take turns doing that, uh, we have an instructor for the uh. Exercise for seniors, we have an instructor for the pickleball. The only, the only ones that ask for money in, for their teaching are the spin classes. And, and that is an extra fee.
Okay.
For the clients, so whatever they take in from the clients, that's what the instructors get. The other instructors, pretty much, uh, we've worked on a deal that they get a membership to the gym in return for their teaching, the classes.
Nice.
So, that's kind of.
Yeah.
Kept us in balance.
Makes sense. Alright, great project.
Now, my mother-in-law did a balance class over there for seniors, and she really, really got a lot out of it, she said it was great.
Yeah, yeah. We've had, is this our third year or fourth year coming up on that?
I think it's third, but.
Third, and she'll start in March and go till May. Twice a week, we get about twenty-five people out there for exercise for seniors and then we talk a lot too.
Absolutely, it's a social hour, you bet.
She does a good job. I took it this year and you know, I'm an old farmer and mechanic and think I'm nothing wrong with me and my person. These the simple exercises, like you can't really get out of bed the next morning. And maybe I'm not quite as good shape. Well, if you have any more que- I don't want to take any more time unless you have more questions.
I appreciate you guys coming in and good to hear about it and know what you're doing.
And um appreciate you taking the time to listen to us.
Glad to hear.
Yeah, thank you. We loved it.
I'll swing up in the north part of the counter. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Let's move on to our next discussed action item, liquor license for Copper Ridge. It's in the packet.
Great emotion, the three.
Liquor license for Copper Ridge.
Second my gene, any further discussion? Hang done all in favor, say aye.
I'm not getting in the way of them people have weddings where we wouldn't free.
Citizen input. Anybody on Zoom land? We have nobody in the audience? We can move on to our budget work session. We do have Lynn here. Public health, do you have anybody coming from landfill? Yeah, let's take let's take five minutes quick. All right, and then we'll start with. Okay, who would you rather us go with?
You want to do landfill first, I think it's probably better.
How long will she be?
Uh, I haven't heard yet.
Who else we can start with? Yeah, we can start with Chuck. I don't know. That is only ten thirty.
What time for meeting? Eleven?
I think she meant ten forty five. She said eleven forty five, but I think she told me eleven was the meeting, so.
Oh, got it.
Nobody's gonna talk that long.
Well, no, guess what?
Looking a little. Tone down the tan a little.
You know, that one didn't have one. That's where they have the race there. Oh, she dashed it out of the way. Would you, where's your vacation this time? floating around the Caribbean for the last week. I'm just. I was my floating around there for a weekend. Kind of nice to do. You get bored? Believe me, I'll take that type of board any day of the week. I I like cruises, but I prefer the resorts. Okay, is that what it was, a cruise? That just seems like it was quite too fast for me. The one time I did, it just. You went to the Dominican, the Virgin Islands, British Virgin Islands, the Bahamas. British would have been St. Thomas. No, St. Thomas would have been where in US? Okay. Tortula? There've been the Charlotte. Tortola? T O R T O L A. I think it's actually Portola and a Portula. By the way, I still won't go. Said when I went down to Charlotte Molly, that was that was lost, so. I'd totally, totally do that again in a heartbeat. Would you have sailed? Norwegian? Norwegian? We must, one of those people, they had a uh this was their eighth cruise. I mean, they always cruise with Norwegian. So they have, they're in the high level rewarders sector. They had a suite. And we had the ring around the corner for one more time. It was very nice. Oh, I'm sure, yeah, yeah. Totally. Yes, thank you for that. So it's how far they are. It's amazing how many doors I don't.
Yeah.
Hi, are you the one that safety meeting mom? Here.
What what time is it?
It's just in the morning, like nine noon or.
What's a four?
It's this. I don't think I'm gonna be able to make it, but. No, no. I'd say that's eighteen, but I'm looking at that. About to put seven thousand a mile a year on truck, so I I can get better than twenty eighteen and make a lot.
Cool. I don't remember ever having one of those. The safety meeting.
Oh, so you went last time, I think.
Oh, it could be.
Safety workshop?
I thought you went last year.
Safety action.
Stickling your brain.
But all that kind of safety thing.
Yeah, that was a little different than this one. This dude vendor. Other agencies come to that? Who? Or is it just his guys?
It's just his guys, isn't it?
Our last safety meeting was just his guys and us, but.
I don't think this is like his, is it?
Yeah, I think this is something different. I'll have to ask him who's. I gotta head down and talk to him afterwards anyways, but um it's got a that posted on the bulletin board downstairs.
So Friday at ten AM, I need to be.
Jake's here for citizen input. I don't know if you wanna. Yeah, Jake, you got something for us while we're waiting for Kim?
Yeah, just uh um it's supposed to mean that you had went to something in place or something. Um to prevent or more anonymous viewers on Zoom. Um we want them to be able to identify them. Um and I did come up with a solution for it. Um if it is still free of charge, there's no cost to it. But it does require them to create an account with Zoom. Um there's no licensing involved. It's very low in the licensing standard. Thirty minute, the the account would be cut or the meeting would be cut off type of license. I was just curious, um proposing that to you, uh Paul, is that something that you want to move forward with? It's a checkbox.
Everybody would have to register to be able to attend Zoom and not just get on the link?
Right.
I don't know if I like that.
I think we cut them off at thirty minutes?
No, 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 no. That's if they were have their own account, their own meeting. It's not.
Oh, that's what you just said.
Yeah, I apologize for the confusion there.
Is there a simple way, you know, and and our biggest concern is when we do a public hearing, we have everybody sign in. And then we have folks on Zoom that we can't identify. They don't even, it's, you know.
They don't respond back. We can't just bump them?
Um, I mean.
I don't think you can. It's a public meeting. You have to talk to Colin.
That that's a that's a call.
But if they don't identify them, so that and that's our issue is that public meeting, you're supposed to have everybody identified, whether they're here in public and sign in on a sheet or if they're on Zoom to sign in, but sometimes you can't get them to respond.
Never had that before, but it's become kind of a reoccurring issue and we kind of it's what's right, it's right. I have to say your name and then we'll put it down on the yellow piece of paper. Exactly.
I mean, but they're, you know, they're refusing to do that. We can.
So Colin says that that's the proper thing to do. We have a way to do that?
I I you can move anybody from a meeting.
You can.
It's you can't. I mean, I'm I'm not talking legally. I'm talking from that.
We're talking legally.
Yeah.
After we get the legal part of it.
From a from a national perspective.
That's really important, right?
You can keep someone from a meeting.
Pushing the button?
Yes, um. If Colin stays at the point, that's where you go.
We'll fight that out.
Jake, before I do anything, let me talk to Colin and find out sure legal aspects of a Zoom and public meetings and where we're at.
So.
Because that would dictate what you're trying to do. Because I think technically you don't have to offer Zoom. You offer Zoom so the members, like for a board meeting, you all, you five, ten attend. I think that's the public, that's what we heard at the new elected official school. Is that the purpose for offering Zoom is so the members can attend. I mean, we continue to do it because our audience, the taxpayers, the constituents like to be part of the meeting, of course, but it's not a requirement.
Yeah, I believe Colin and then we'll get back to that. I'm not in the turn.
I don't know if Colin about that and we'll go from there.
Okay, uh but yeah, just to kind of further iterate, the only thing you would just, in this case, they would authenticate like they normally would, or they would authenticate Zoom itself, but they're not paying a dime for to to do that. Okay, they're just creating accounts similar to them, creating an email address on Gmail. That's all it is, okay? Um so I just wanted to alleviate any concerns with that, that there's no additional cost or anything to it.
But I don't know.
Creation.
I mean, currently, these people that are on Zoom right now, uh they have to have a Zoom account, don't they? No, they can just go into our website, call it on our link.
And our pass code and come to our meeting.
Yep.
So what's the, how do they have names?
They, that's the name that they put in when they um sign in, so to speak. Uh they just write in whoever they are.
But with the app, they have to identify, they they type in usually say this.
But you don't have to sign in.
Right now, no, you don't have to sign in. You just type in whoever you are. It could be Donald Trump. It could be someone else that you don't know who's on the other end. With the email address, at least, yeah, you still got a little bit of anonymity, but there's enough, it's just another.
Because they could use a pretty vague.
Yeah.
Address and not know who they were.
We've got public health here to go through budgets and let me talk to Colin and we'll get back to.
Sounds like we can.
I mean, there's still no.
Thanks, Jake.
Hundred percent. Hundred percent, right? So also by the way.
You just need to be able to identify them for public hearings or ask them to leave our meeting.
Can I interrupt? Can I interrupt? This is Peggy Staley. Can you hear me? Okay, so when I sign in to to your meetings with my phone, B block is always me. Does it still say B block?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know why. I think they sold me a used phone. I have no idea who B block is, so just so you know, it's always me.
Yeah, we got you.
I'm not trying to hide. I just don't want to speak if I don't have to, so.
And and the issue is we have people that we don't know. It might say user and they don't identify themselves and that's hard.
Yeah, it's it's nothing that I'm typing in manually. It's just how it pops up, so.
Well, that's a perfect example of no matter if you can put in some sort of username down, you could said your name Joe Diffie and we think it Joe Diffie, but it's really Peggy Staley, you know?
Yeah.
So what you use for, again, it don't really make, it don't necessarily prove that it's who you are.
Yeah, I don't I don't have to type anything in. It just, I say join meeting and it, that's what it, how it's showing up on your end. So.
Perfect. Thanks, Peggy.
I'm just gonna see you wanna be.
That's right.
I mean, it could be sitting in here too. I mean, if I didn't know who Jim Turner is, I'd say, well, can you put your name down on this paper for a public hearing? You can put down Reba McIntyre and we're like, oh, okay, nice to meet you.
There we go.
I mean, other than asking for formal ID.
Kim, since you're talking about, you just will come down.
Okay.
We're ready to run.
I was gonna say you can modify what shows up on the screen. I think there's a spot on there. I think up in the upper right-hand corner somewhere, there's like three dots and you can click on those dots and then you can change what oh, change what it says on there. Got it? I'm not, I'm not sure.
I think I have.
Nice people, but there's no already.
Yeah.
It is a nice team. Very exciting.
Hands out, hand out for us too.
Great get one?
That finished that one, didn't it?
We did.
All right.
We've we've jumped ahead many years, two years.
I hope I'm around for that one.
I said the year.
That's what happens when the sand gets in your eye.
It's the shirts.
Yeah, it's the shirts. It didn't get you, huh? Darn. Oh, I mean, oh, thank goodness.
Are you gonna throw me off the back of your boat?
Maybe. You know what happens. Accidents happen.
Uh, should you guys use three percent for races? Is that what we used?
Two and a half, I sent this one.
Yeah, it's on the page three.
Oh, yeah, it's written.
Lynn, on the first page, bullet tax action, seven hundred thousand, previous year, four hundred eighty-eight. Because I just lost some revenue.
Last year, you did fund two positions that were at the beginning. That would have funded them, it would have been probably fairly close to that. You could add about two hundred and ten thousand last year.
And those two positions are? Hospice?
Health and hospice.
Hospice, health, yeah.
You see a decrease on some other grant funding like for, and we just have to ECI rule that stuff. Words start.
Start, oh, that's what works. Gonna see some changes, I don't. And others can be changes in ECI.
Yeah.
Which might be good, might be, you know, like from our perspective, um like the childcare nurse consultant, part of that's funded by HHS, part of that's funded by ECI, so we're required to write additional grants to cover that. But now that I'm understanding is that, like the childcare nurse consultant, those are all going through HHS. So that eliminates a couple, three grants that that we're gonna have to write for to be funded, funneled through there. So that'll be a good thing, a little less administrative.
Cause yeah.
A little. And HHS is also good at adding extra, extra stuff to them too to to monitor and and you know, just the reports that they ask for sometimes are a little ridiculous. Which gotta do.
Have you heard of any more talk about state adding public health to behavioral health or taking it over?
I haven't heard anything that behavioral health is taking over public health.
I never heard of the state taking over public health. We know it's got a rumor out there, but.
It's it's not that the state's taking it over. It's that they're going to, they're looking at a regionalization approach similar to behavioral health. Um but we don't know what it's gonna look like. We don't know when it's gonna happen. Um it's gonna require some legislative code changes to make it happen and I I don't know.
Well, if they use the pattern of how they've transitioned uh mental health over to the state taking over, hopefully all the hiccups will be kind of uh snuggles.
And that's why they, because originally I think that public health was on the slate for last year and they they decided to hold off because of all the difficulties of behavioral health. And it's like, well, let's wait and see how things go and. And they, they decided to hold off because of all the difficulties of behavioral health. And it's like, well, let's wait and see how things go and.
I'm just curious if you had heard much, cause you know, we, we hear that in our meetings sometimes that it's being thrown out there, talked about.
It's being talked.
Details.
Nope. And, and that's what, that's exactly what we hear too. It's being talked about, but there's no details.
Yeah, there'll be no local public health boards. It'll be regional like it.
But potentially, there will still have to be representation of local interest, but what's that's going to look like, who knows? It could be like a, a ten member board where you don't, you've got.
Of advisors.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't, I don't know.
Wait and see, wait and see.
Makes it hard to do a strategic plan and when you don't know what's coming at you.
Stu, what do you want to key into today? What do you wanna highlight for us? Seven hundred thousand.
That's law and the skilled nursing part is where that's all showing up there. Hospice is making sixteen thousand. Is that, am I reading that right? Skilled nursing is losing seven hundred seventeen thousand.
But that's not.
That's public health.
That's public health, skilled, skilled nursing.
It's everything.
Everything else but hospice.
Yeah, three hundred thousand and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just trying to, three hundred thousand of that is, is. Change in salary and benefits to three hundred and four thousand from last year's budget. Yes.
That's just. Now there was a hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase in health insurance costs from last year's budget. Because when last year's budget was put together, we didn't have this year's.
Got, got the proposed, you know, the, happened to propose salary increase and all the hike and insurance and all that. So.
Right. If they were.
You're looking at about a hundred and thirty. Trying to wrap my head around.
Which would, a hundred and thirty would be salaries, how, salaries, benefits, those types of things. Okay. Other than the health insurance.
Just like to try to compare apples to apples. What we were last year compared, I mean, take raises out of it, where are we? Where's the, where's the increase coming from? I can, I can understand some raises and that stuff, but. Where's the other?
He also.
Where's the other five hundred?
Family steps added to position, which is a hundred and forty-two thousand as well. All of that is listed on this page.
But that's.
Notice the thing that I've.
Yeah. No, that's fine. Just explaining where it's at.
Cause at some point in time, I want to deal with the taxpayers. So why, why are we? What are we getting out of this? I mean, what are we, what are we paying for it and what are we getting in return? You know, hospice is pretty easy to, it's the wash.
Well, what they're getting, pal, is they're getting our services, which amount to about eighteen thousand services a year. And the average cost is thirty-one dollars for their service. That's everything that before we call some hot things. Uh, your immunizations, can help me out with your immunizations, the innocent cares, the doctor visits. Stuff that.
Disease investigations, TV visits, TV clients, med visits, um. Our, our bath visits for, um, person cares, um. Your, your family step stuff. I mean, everything, everything happens.
Of all of the programs, which one do you feel is, uh, is called taking the most out of the budget? And not seeing a, uh, financial return on it. You know, hospice is easy. A lot of you can get your grants. Um, just by looking at this, I would think it's home healthcare that we're providing the service that we're not being able to.
But that's, that's not correct.
That's what I'm asking the question.
Correct answer is that our administrative costs are what's costing the most money. You have me, you have Kim, you have Mary Ellen, you have Karen. Um, you have Miriam.
Yeah, we have.
Those are all not funded positions through any of our, any of our programs. They sit in.
So administration is the biggest expense you have?
Administration is the largest one that is not covered. Yes.
By grand, yeah, I mean, family steps and all those other things, right.
Into family steps at all.
I am.
Very, very well.
Little pieces, little pieces of me go. Little pieces of me go. Where they can go, like if I'm providing direct services in a program, um, then I go directly to that program. Um, in, in like, talking about family steps, um, I, I am in that, in that grant. Not a ton of need, but my hours, I think that I work in that program are covered by that great.
And you write that down?
Yeah.
Well, there's a little bit more than.
Yep, um. Yeah. Question.
So I, I'm just curious, I guess, on the first page. You know, in our book, I don't know, did you guys get?
I didn't raise one over.
We give that listing down, but I didn't bring that over.
So I, when you see stuff where it's budgeted, but it's, there's never been any activity. I mean, we only have three years of budget, two years of activity. Really a year and a half of activity, but if there's nothing there. When do you not line item putting in a dollar amount in there?
Well, what, what are you looking at?
Like, I'm just looking at, uh, in-home nurse speech therapy and in-home nurse occupational therapy. Occupational therapy is bud- budgeted twenty-five hundred, speech therapy a thousand, three years in a row. And there's never been anything line item.
Speech, speech therapy happens very rarely.
Yeah.
Again, and it, it, if it's not, then in that line item, it's probably something.
Right, so should that line item just be crossed off and just be a zero?
Because the possibility is still there, Craig, that you could have something. When I put this budget together, we have to look and say, okay, what things have happened? Because you're not, you want me to come over every time I have a bill and say, hey, I've got a bill for fifteen hundred dollars of speech therapy. We didn't budget it because we haven't done it in three years, but we have to do it this year. Well, you know, somewhere you have to make it an assumption that if it isn't gonna be in speech therapy, it might be in, in occupational therapy. Or physical therapy.
That's why I, I didn't know since we only go back like to twenty-three, twenty-four, you're looking back farther than that. Seeing that, hey, seven years ago, we did.
Should be looking back to twenty, twenty, twenty-one, somewhere near.
That's what you do.
Yeah.
Yes. And, and we.
And again, you don't know. I mean, we could.
Understand you don't know.
We could pick up a patient that needed a lot of speech therapy. We may not have any. We don't know.
And I think to Craig's mind too, we got, we go through all these budgets. We look at this. It's, sometimes they get moved to some other line item and it's like, well, if it did, then can we scratch that one off and if it's covered somewhere else? But if it's not.
Right.
And we budget, I guess, you know, you budget on there a minimal amount for speech therapy because we don't, that's not something we see a lot of. Um, but we did, I, we did get a referral.
We do occasionally get one.
And we contract that out to, to.
Do you get a reimbursement?
Yeah, that, that we get reimbursement. You know, the same thing with occupational therapy, um, we don't see a lot of that. But you put a little bit in that item, in that, in that line for the, the case that you do get. Um, the majority of our referrals or therapists come in for. Physical therapist comes in as the assessment and determines whether or not those additional therapies are needed. And so they, they might say yes, they might say no. But I, I guess, you know.
Farther down or on the next page, data system hardware. You go back, it was nine hundred dollars, buddy, then you spent ten thousand and then the next year, seven hundred fifty, buddy, you didn't spend any and then this year's nine thousand.
Well, we're gonna put it in your server.
That's what that's for.
Right.
Home for over.
Yeah.
But don't Jake pay for that?
Not out of our budgets, because our budgets can push some of that to the grants. Sometimes he does, sometimes he doesn't.
Maybe portions of it sometimes, if appropriate, depending on the grant. No, you're fine.
Yeah, sometimes he pays for things and sometimes.
But she writes the checks and hasn't I. That's why I was looking over.
Yeah, I also had a question, I guess, about the dues and memberships. It seems like. You would know more about which, you know, what you're a member of and what the dues specifically are. And, um, budgeted, previous two budgets was twenty-five hundred, this year it's sixty-five hundred. And so far this year, you've only spent nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, I guess, and fifty cents towards dues and memberships.
Sitting on about three thousand over there right now.
What's that?
I'm sitting on about three thousand over there right now that I haven't paid. Um, because of the issues with, with our staffing, we haven't, we haven't determined where that's gonna end up yet, so. Why would we pay for dues if we may not be around to use?
Right, I just was more curious, I guess, about the jump from the twenty-five hundred to the sixty-five hundred if you're. Usually stay about the same.
When, when that last year was very good about sending down the dues and to me to be paid. Beth last year did not realize which, which ones she wanted drawn to. So then she had to add them back in. Um, I don't know if that's.
We can be, I mean, we can look at those and be a little more specific.
I know that they run anywhere from two fifty to fifteen hundred.
Right, right.
So.
Hi, you got a question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just gonna jump at this from what we've been catching from the state. What's coming yet? Like with secondary roads, we're going down the list of things that we have to do in Crawford County. And the sheriff's office, we're gonna have to go through that a lot harder. It's the things that we have to do, the things we want to do. And. But them two, you guys are our other biggest entity. That we're, we're dollars, county dollars are going to out of our, our cut of the property tax budget. And with property taxes going down, you guys supply some money of your own, you know, what, you've got your own revenue streams as well. However, there's a lot of them that are even affecting the profit of tax budget. Um, they're not done. Taking us off at the ankles up there in Des Moines. So we're, we need to get ahead of this. This is stuff we spoke about in the past. What are essential services for public health? We need to discuss that. And your board needs to have a smart sit-down. Uh, what are the essential services? What do we need to provide? What are we, what do we have in Crawford County that could supple- that should be doing those services? And if that service is, uh, non-existent in Crawford County. Then perhaps we need to look at it, but we still need to look at what we can afford to do. Um, I don't ever want to compromise like the main jobs that I do and I am aware of, like public health and the disease areas and stuff like that. Those are the, those are our critical, because nobody else is doing that. So we have to watch out for that. Uh, so. To me, that's where we gotta start looking. I mean, what are we doing that maybe was necessary for? I don't want to say public convenience, cause that just sounds. A public need that wasn't being taken care of there, that's a better way to say it. That wasn't being taken care of, but what do we have now that is there? So that we can. Tidy up our tax asking and still serve, we care about people, so we want to serve. But we, we, we're not gonna have as much money going down the road. We don't want to start digging into our reserves to kind of pad things. That I'm just saying, we're not obligated to do to begin with, because that's what they're telling us. They said, we're gonna have to make the hard call. We, we got lectured pretty good about that last several supervisor meetings. So I mean, these are the things that. We need to get ahead of and, and, uh, on your side, you know, you're having trouble finding nurses anyway. And we're gonna have to jack salaries up to get them. Now I'm starting to wonder, are we in the right lane? These are my, these are things that are running through my head, but public health has always been important. I mean, I, 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 I don't want to catch your, your system just out of simply financial. But if we've got services that are available in Crawford County. And they're serving the, and they're serving the people's needs and Medicaid's taking care of it, or, you know, I mean. Are you, are you tracking what I'm saying? I think these are the things that we've got to look at in every department. And in particular, the, the ones that take up the largest chunk of the budget. Are we, you know, like for the sheriff's office, I know he wants some new thing, but we're gonna maybe have to spread that out over a few years. Hopefully he's our sheriff for twenty-five or however many years, so he can spread that out over a long time. Um, you know, it's the same thing that I, I've said to him, hey, you know, I know you've got a lot of big. And he, he has some great ideas, but we can't afford to do them all next year, you know, and so we're, we, we've got to make sure that we're. While we're looking for their health, we gotta look after their mental health because their checkbook starts shrinking, you know, you see what I'm getting? They, they, this ain't our money, it's the taxpayers' money. We gotta spend it as good as we can to give them the, the most important services. That are your responsibility to take care of. Okay, I suppose. I think I'm beating this horse pretty well and it's already there, but let's.
I know what you're trying to say, but we've been instructed to find a, a more leaner, efficient way to operate.
Thank you. There's, that's what I said.
Are there things that, are you wondering, are there things then that public health does? That they're in direct competition with the private sector or with another entity that is doing the exact same thing?
That, that too. I, I just don't want to. You know, you look at like what's happening in mental, mental health side of gene state. I mean, now they're just being. And we have no, you know, we have no control because. It, it's, it's, it's a large thing gone. And I think if we're controlling our need, wants and desires. Uh, a little earlier in the game, maybe we'll be in better shape when they start doing the hatchet work, cause I, it's coming. I mean, you're, you're hearing it, you already, so I mean.
But I think some of those two, those discussions. Need to start with the word of health and it needs to look at.
That's what I meant. They need to talk.
Need to look at though, the implications of if something did get, let's say hospice gets kind, Gina, you, we had this conversation, where do those people go? And if it is to the private sector company here, if they can't afford that, then do they go to our ERs? Do they go, I mean, we have to look at what we're doing and, and the ripple effects of all the services we're providing.
And who pays for it? You know, their services, you know, uh, it's hard to. Public health is a hard one to kind of just, you know, this is a simple version of it. And if you just look at it with, uh, uh. The, uh, task, that tax asking of seven hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-three, thirty-seven. Uh, skilled nursing in a lump sum is losing seven hundred and seventeen thousand, ten dollars. Negative figure. So it, it, it seems like that's an easy target of where, but it's, it's more than just one line. And that's kind of hard to, and that's why it's always been hard for people to pinpoint where the, the drain is. And I think, um, that should be a number we kind of drill into of where the, the real, you know, we've got everything all broken down. But there's something that's losing more money and we're asking the taxpayers of Crawford County to supplement that. And that's the tough question that you and I've talked about, you know, what are we gonna have to do? Because we cannot continue to supplement seven hundred thousand dollars of a service. That obviously isn't paying for itself. And it's the cost of the wages, the cost of the, the gas, everything that goes into it. And that's a big number to ask the taxpayers to, uh, compensate. And so those are gonna be the tough questions right there. And we've talked about it.
And goes back into the strategic planning thing, um, which is, you know, was supposed to be on the slate for this year. Um, but with everything in the turmoil that it is, it's kind of hard to strategic plan. Um, but I did reach out to HHS last week, um, to ask for them to come and help. With some of that strategic planning, because that is not something that any of us are well-trained or well-versed in, in doing, so.
Learn as you go.
Yeah, yeah. So and all of that falls into that whole strategic planning thing, looking at, you know, doing the environmental scan to find out what's out there. Um, where the gaps are, you know, and then talking about those foundational pieces, you know, what, what is it that we need to be doing? Um, to ensure the health of, of the people of our county and then figuring out how to incorporate all of that. Um, in an effective and efficient manner.
So when we get down to the bottom line of this, you know, or this seven hundred thousand dollar tax asking isn't. I mean, we're not gonna be able to approve that. So how, you know, it's something we've never had to deal with before. So we're gonna have to figure out what that looks like.
Well, I don't believe that through this, four years ago, that number's been larger than that since I've been at this table. And unfortunately.
Yeah.
And it, and then on the backside of it. It's come back and they've never, the revenue has been greater and it's offset that. I mean, it's all the. They probably got one of the hardest budgets to hit too. Don't get me wrong, I'm not. But it, like you said, that's, that's a big number that.
The big number.
Kind of a parasitic drain on tax dollars can be. But also on the other side, they can also generate a lot of income.
But somehow that's not working like it should, because if the services needed, you know, your Medicaid, Medicare, insurance. Um, grants, uh, private pay. Isn't matching up to the services that we provide. Isn't matching up to the services that we provide.
The grants are never gonna match up.
No, no, no.
That, that just helps.
But they, they do help, they do help.
Well, for those services, the I smiles and the, the, the services that. Without, and part of the mission is to make sure that we have healthy children, and without those grants to make sure that. Uh, kids that parents aren't taking them to the dentist, don't grow up and have rotten teeth, and your teeth affect your ability to learn and your, you know.
Some, some of those things, and we didn't have that.
Yes.
And some of it are demographics.
Yes, a lot, a lot of it, yeah.
Yes.
Our citizen, a lot of them qualify for that, just with the county living. And some, some of those services are hard to put a number on, because where I'm going with this. Seven hundred thousand, but, oh, we had that ECI legislative quorum years ago, and we showed the ACES study that. I smiles and family steps and it's money upfront, but, but it's, it's prevention, about the cure type thing. How do you, how do you put a number on? On the backside, well, that kid got the help he needed and he got a good start, their family steps or nurse care consultants did something that. Didn't cost us on the back end, that's.
It, it's hard to put a number on something that didn't end up happening, because you did this here. It's like the, the immunizations, how many diseases did you prevent by giving? Well, you don't know, because they didn't happen, there's no number there.
This just poses us, as Crawford County, a double whammy, if it's our demographics and the state pinching our pocketbook.
Getting what's.
Well, that's why I said I wanna get ahead of this before we get our hands forced, and those. That we deem critical services.
Trying to be proactive.
Get, get hacked, hatcheted when, when that was the ones that we really felt we needed most. Because there wasn't something here that does that, and their potential for something being, isn't. You know, I mean, that's, that's what I'm, that's where I'm at, I wanna get ahead of that, cuz you know.
We have to.
Last year wasn't fun.
Some of these programs that are costing taxpayer dollars, that better, you're gonna end up biting us in the butt on the, in the long run, even more money.
We need to modern, we need to modernize our budget, period.
Modernize, your new word.
I'm gonna use that until you guys are sick of hearing it.
Well, I guess, yeah, you've got your work cut out for you to try to decipher doing this, you know.
We, we do.
I mean, we, we all do, I guess, not just you personally, sorry, I mentioned.
But we don't really, I don't wanna speak for you guys, you know your world, you know what we need that, that aren't, that aren't, you know, you know what we have to do. You know what is really important. And you know what some things we're doing to, I mean, like hospice, I always heard that we, we're good cuz it makes money, but then we're still spending a lot of money on it. So then I ask myself, are we gaining? I mean.
The last year was a good example type, we have. I don't even remember what the budget was. We only used a hundred and twelve thousand of the budget number, so hospice had a super year last year.
Yeah.
Stayed the county's about four hundred and five dollars.
Fake it?
Well, we didn't use it.
The taxpayers just spent it, they bought into it.
I mean, had we, had we continued the budget as we thought it was gonna be, we would've done like a pile up, I think, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. We used a hundred and four. That was, that was an unexpected year, we have way fewer revenues than we probably were going to.
But here's the thing, here's the thing that we gotta, that we have to sit here, this, this is what the five of us. And the person keeping notes has to think about it, we, 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 if we ask for that tax, it's cut. And so the taxpayers get hammered with it, and them are the ones that are screaming at Des Moines and have Des Moines screaming at us. So, I mean, that, them are. That, that, when they talk about scrim, trimming pork or fat, that's, that's, that's what it is. I mean, put it right plainly, that's what, that is the trimming the pork, and. We've gotta find ways to trim that without. Destroying our programs, you know, I mean, the ones that, I mean, so. Yeah, and I, I actually, I remember saying it at a meeting over there, what, what can we coordinate with our? Private partners that help us reduce your burden of trying to find nurses and try, you know, what can we do? You know, are we doing all we can there, this is what I'm asking, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what you got, you're busy over there, I'm busy over here. But we've gotta find ways that we can. Clean up our bottom line, you know, that's the, that's this board's responsibility, and that's, and we're gonna push everybody to do that. Especially the ones that are, hey, even the ones that aren't, I mean, the, the ladies on the second floor here, I mean, they. We've got them just about trimmed where they're, you know, they're, they're coming in and coming in on fumes. So, I mean, we, we, we expect it from everybody, and I mean, I know that you need some buffer in there. But uh, we're still asking for taxes, and even if we aren't using them. You know, that's what starts to create reserves that we really don't need to have.
You have that.
So, can, can we break down? The, this number a little bit more in the skilled nursing, because it's more than just skilled nursing, it's costing a million five. And we're bringing in eight hundred thousand, that seems like that's the line. That we need to really look at and figure out where the disconnect of money versus services. How hard would that be to kind of drill into that a little bit? Cuz that's, that's.
Past data?
Excuse me?
Past data?
Yeah.
Historical data? It'd be.
Uh, last year would be.
It'd be a monumental task the way our system is set up right now.
Which is why we were.
That's why we went to project accounting.
Yeah, so that we were.
We will have that, but not until the end.
Better able to drill into where, where are those areas at, because the way it was set up now, everything's all conglomerated together. And it's spreadsheets, and it would be sorting data from spreadsheets, and it can be done, it's just.
Yeah, and you know, at the end of the day.
Lot of time.
Man hours.
Weeks.
Yep.
We, we, we don't need to create any more man hours to figure out, you know, so that's not an easy task, but I think. Kind of what we need to look at is, you know, each, why that is such a, such a big number. I mean, is it, is it the, there's nobody, are we sending people out to provide a service that nobody's paying for? Or is it costing us too much with uh, wages, benefits, um, whatever it is? Cuz you, you have no cost for bricks and mortar, you have no cost for insurance of the building. You know, what, what the normal person or average business is putting out, and we still can't even break even, I mean, we are. Just by my look, unless I'm not looking right, we're losing a lot of money providing a service, um, that isn't demanded by the state of Iowa that we provided. So, that's kind of where that's gonna be.
That took me a long time to say what she just said, sorry.
That's where I go back to where the board of health really needs to have those discussions, because those services. I think it's a little bit unfair to say that they are a loss, because you're still gaining those services for what they provide. It's weighing what those services are versus what it's costing.
Everybody will have their way to explain it by the time we get to the end.
But it still has to, I mean, we still need to have those discussions with the board of health, to see what is actually doing the most good in it.
But I'll be quite honest with you, if the only way you're gonna cut seven, even five hundred thousand either is sellers. We are eighty, roughly eighty-five percent sellers, there's nowhere else to go.
That's.
So, I mean, that's just. I'm right, of that seven hundred thousand. You took the wage increase, so we'd still be losing short four hundred and twelve thousand.
Probably. I haven't looked at it, child, but yeah, that's probably correct.
But.
That makes you feel better. Only a net loss if you took wages increases off.
Not really.
Just putting it in perspective. If the boys all over there said, don't give us a raise.
That does, that really doesn't make me feel any better. But that was nice to try, I appreciate it, yeah. But, so, so if we're losing four hundred thousand dollars and it's not in the wages. What are we doing that's still, you know?
Glenn's point also is, that's where the, that's where the, the gap is, it's in wage, I mean, eighty-five percent wages.
Cuz grants aren't covered in all positions.
Right, I mean, immunization grant is a good example, it's a ninety-one hundred dollar grant, we'd be twelve hundred immunizations, but. I don't think that's gonna cover, you know, it's fifteen minutes per.
Aren't, aren't we kind of obligated to that?
Have a nurse, you gotta have a scheduler, you've gotta have a biller, you see, I'm going, all of those administrative costs. Piling up, so just to do that ninety-one hundred dollar grant, you're probably looking at twenty-five to thirty thousand, just on that one grant. D O G E.
Yeah, he's getting in trouble now.
Yeah.
Don't, 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 don't.
You can't have an office like ours without somebody at the phone in the front desk, I mean, you can't just have your public walking in. So now you have at least one person, we have to have interpreters because of the population we serve, so now you have to have two people. You know, you have to have a biller, so now you have to have three people, you see, just keeps adding more guys, and a lot of those positions are not. Building two grants.
I will say that we do bill pieces of their time to other things as we have them doing them, I don't just have them sitting at the front desk. So like, like Marion, when she's not doing interpreting services, for example, at immunization clinic, she's helping with our. Care for kids, and she's putting those packets together, or she's working in family steps doing interpreting services there, or she's going down to family planning. Or, I mean, it's not that she's just sitting there, we don't have anybody really just sitting doing nothing. We try and.
She also goes to WIC and her, versus.
Yep, we contract her out to WIC and, um.
What does the dynamic look like? As far as day-to-day operations, if we. Look at our bottom line for our budgets and we don't fully fund two nurses. Or.
We're gonna lose nine people, at least. If you, if you shut down hospice and skilled nursing, at least nine people's jobs could be affected, fully.
Because of the two, because they're just prepped in and they wanna quit?
They're just gone, there's, there's no funding for them. And mine would be in that, in that. Which, I mean, if, if that's the way it goes, I'm, I'm fully ready to retire, so I'm not, myself, you're not. Gonna be affected as much as some of the other people.
One I ask, cuz I.
But if you want to put a hard truth, you're gonna lose nine physicians.
That's if we didn't do hospice.
If you, if you didn't do hospice.
We can't do one without the other.
You can't do one without the other, because you gotta have a nurse to cover the nurse when she's, you know, she can't work twenty-four seven times.
That's right.
Or he, I guess, it could be a he nurse too.
But that, that hinges on the hiring of two new nurses then. I'm sorry, if we didn't.
I gotta, I gotta replace my two. That, that were here that are, are leaving, and then I do need at least one more, if not two. I could hire an LPN at a little bit lesser rate, but by golly, they're, they're asking for almost as much as our ends make now. And so.
That's just a supply and demand thing.
It's, it's, it's hard, it's hard.
And, and that's the thing that, that, I mean, I, it's what we have to do here, and I'm, I think, I'm, I think what we're asking is your board. Make some hard calls, let's, let's evaluate what we need to do, I'm not really wanting anyone to have to leave anywhere, but. We gotta, we gotta evaluate how these budget dollars are spent, and then, and you, it isn't just you guys that were having this serious conversation. Like, I mean, we're, we're looking at what's coming, and we got, we gotta be, we gotta get, we gotta get ahead of it. I mean, or this weekend anyway, cuz hell, I don't know if we can, but.
When's the next public health board meeting?
March. Thirteen, maybe, somewhere in that timeframe, maybe we should call one a little bit sooner. We generally do have to have a, a budget-like meeting, um.
Let's maybe.
After, usually after this, then we go back and revise, come back with, with something and then, um.
Let's get one called a little bit sooner and uh, get the empty turns to what's, um.
We need good people on that board, so, I mean, and I think you guys can all work together to get us a good plan, you know, even if we have to make our own day plan, you know?
Get one and we'll get together.
That's what Iowa code designing board is to. Put that plan together, so what is the number that this board will be comfortable with?
Zero. Well, that's comfortable. No, I'm just, I'm.
Zero is not gonna happen, even if you give everything else.
And you can, we've got obligations that we have to do, so we're not gonna be at zero, but.
Ten percent.
Ten percent what?
Oh, seven hundred and seventy?
Seventy thousand? I honestly don't. Not, not in providing the services, even if, even if that number is half, you're not gonna be able to do that for seventy thousand. I, I, I can't see that happening.
But you're gonna give three hundred thousand of it back. You're gonna give three hundred thousand of it back.
And that's what we're trying to avoid.
I mean, that's crap, I mean, that's just a number, you know, I'm.
It's not a static number.
No, not very static at all.
Well, and I, and I get what you're saying too, you know, last year we only used a hundred and. Whatever it was, so, so the rest of it came back, good year, I, it.
But we've also been on them years where you.
Where it's not.
Fired you guys, but you came and had budgets, and then it's fifty or two hundred thousand dollars, sure, sure.
Yes, right.
And we, taxpayers were spending a million dollars.
Worked very hard to not to have that happen, yeah.
Actually here, so like, I mean, if we're gonna go down that, if we're going down that rabbit, yeah, here's. Here's an analysis of our tax asking since nineteen ninety. Though the last page, no. I have.
It doesn't mean anything, it just means we've overcharged taxpayers for.
What I've done is I have adjusted the number for the website. So you can see there's, you know, they jumped, they've been all over the place. And I don't have the data for what they initially asked.
And this is the, this is the ending tax asking.
Okay, so first just. I don't have budget numbers, way back, which is nobody probably. Um, and then I adjusted it to twenty-three dollars, twenty, twenty-three dollars. Based on the website down here, if you wanna check me out. And you'll see that it's run anywhere from a hundred and ninety-seven to almost eight, I'm seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, someone's grabbing my attention. Eight hundred and sixty-eight, I remember that.
I remember that.
Eight hundred and sixty-eight, thanks, Paul. I remember that. Yeah, you, you actually, in those two years, you had a couple of years that were really high. And again, those are adjusted so we can look at same dollars we're talking about today.
There's quite a jump from old one to old two, forty-six thousand and five hundred and eighty-four.
Again, they probably had a good hospice year in that year, I, I don't know. That would be my guess, there was another person, there's a couple of years where they've been under fifty thousand.
What the actual tax, tax asking was, and this is this number.
Right or wrong, we had talked about that, Kevin Green from Sioux and Webster County's doing that, where they have that. Roll over fund, that tried their idea, the theory is that it tries to cushion those highs and lows. You don't have to tax ask every year for that full amount, but it's there in case you have a bad year down here.
I know, just kind of left it cuz there didn't seem to be any interest in it, so. You know, and that would be an option too, so we don't have these, these ups and downs in tax asking, but I, I don't either. It depends on where your boards decide to go when, when we meet again.
Yeah, if you wanna. Do that, that would be pretty, it would be, it would make a lot easier.
Monica makes it work for her programs, I mean, her programs are, are technically tax zero. But she has that fund of one hundred and seventy thousand, she moves money in and out at the end of the year to cover any shortfalls. But she has to put it back, and then her next year's, you know, right away, her, her deficit is way high.
Here, whenever you have extra, it goes back into our general fund anyways, but this just pieces of value. For that, not that they wanted to spend it down every year, you really, you want it to be kind of that.
You just.
But it would help with the budget, so that, you know, you wouldn't, we can pretty well nail our expenses. Whether it's in the right line item or not is questionable, but in total, it will, it'll be fairly close. It's the revenue side that gets the tax asking, because when you put a budget together, I could've put a, a big number in our revenues. Knowing it's not right, but I don't, I don't do it that way. I mean, that's not, that's not fair to, fair to me as a budgeter, fair to you guys as a taxi, and we can't. It just doesn't work, you can make the numbers that you want, but if you wanna be a hardcore, hard truth, it's right there in front of you.
Thank you for that, we appreciate that.
That's, that's some farmers that did that last, a year ago, and they're filling out their financial statements, and then they went back and filled out their financial statements this year. I bet you the bankers had a whole different story then. I bet you the bankers had a whole different story then. Actually, you know, inflated the numbers. I mean, that'd be basically what you're doing.
Just on this, when I break this down a little bit, on this family steps and the two workers, that basically pays for itself.
Yeah, that, that, that grants.
Pays for those two. Well, I should pay for three.
Yeah, yeah. Wanted to clarify that, you know, when it's jumps out, we have extra, we have to make sure that.
Yeah, it's kind of like, at, at least right at the moment, it's all right, a hundred percent covered by the grant.
We'll get the public's health board back together and figure out what you can help them to do and come back to you.
I did wanna throw something out to you, um, kind of thinking outside the box of, of things. I know that thirty-seven and a half hours is kind of the full-time, um, where benefits start. With employees liking flexible hours and working flex schedules. And, and especially in the nursing world, when, when you're working, you, you can do, you know, thirty-six hours a week, three twelves as an example. Not that we would work three twelves. Um, that would be crazy. But, um, yeah, something, huh?
I would sign up for that in the heartbeat.
Oh, three twelves? Oh, it'd be wonderful, cause you work three days and have four days off.
Tell me how you can get that done on a farm or not?
Um, yeah. But we, we, we have, um, you know, if you dropped that thirty-seven and a half down to thirty-six, um, you're talking an hour and a half. Um, that would save per employee, um, thirty-three hundred dollars a year. I mean, you're talking an hour and a half. They would still get the bunnies. Um, but it would save on your salary and of, of the budget. Um, for those employees who might be interested in, in working thirty-six instead of thirty-seven and a half or forty.
I, I would say that would be a hard no because of how that would affect every.
I love your way of thinking.
You'd have any other office coming to us. We wanna work thirty-six hours to save.
The bunnies are still gonna stay up there.
Well, the, the cut, but you're saving thirty-three hundred dollars on, I mean, on, on the salary end of things. It's not, I mean, and, and you could prorate, prorate the insurance too, if you've got, cause a lot of places do that. If you're a forty-hour employee, here's how much you pay. If you're a, example, I haven't seen, but thirty-two-hour employee, here's how much you pay. A twenty-four-hour employee, here's how much you pay. And anything beyond that is, is no access. I mean, you, you could um, help us set that.
We have to really change a lot of stuff.
Well, that's thinking outside the box though.
Thinking outside the box and trying to make, you know, and, and on the other end of that, that is also a, a recruitment and retention. Strategy, but.
Would you need more nurses then?
Not necessarily, not necess, I mean, we'd still need the same number of nurses that we need now. But they would have more flexibility in their schedule. And that might be, is something that would entice them to come on board. Hey, we're, we're a thirty-six-hour work week. You only have to do, you know, you can break that up. You know?
I was thinking if they
Four nines or three tens and then a half, half a day or, you know, something like that.
Not knowing the way that your work schedule actually works, though, if somebody's working twelve hours and your office hours are from, you know, eight to four-thirty, what are they gonna be doing after the office closes? Uh, cause we tried that, you know, ten-hour days and the courthouse is closed. What are you doing for three hours while you're, you know?
We wouldn't be able to necessarily do twelves.
Okay, that, that's.
Tens? That would be relatively easy to do, um, because we can do patient, we, right now, we do patient care based on kind of eight to four-three, but we do have our, our bath aids that are out earlier in the morning because we have people that wanna get those services done earlier. So there is that possibility. The other thing is, we're a seven-day-a-week entity, and so we do have people that, that work on the weekends when they're called out to, to do things. I mean, we, we had a hospice patient that needed care this weekend, and so the on-call nurse was working this weekend. Um, it was not me this weekend, no. Um, I, so, I mean, then they, then they're able to flex their time a little bit easier, you know? Just trying to throw ideas out there to, to, you know, help with recruitment and, and retention, cause it's
You do have to think outside the box.
Everywhere, people like those flexible schedules, and if we can figure out a way to keep your employees happy, but they don't leave, then you're saving money on the training end and on that side of things too. Cause it costs a lot to hire and train somebody. So.
I don't even have my phone with me, having people study call. It's Tuesday.
Well, does anybody have any other question? You guys ever, anything else wanna? It would be good to have that public health budget meeting.
Do you know anything more about the Nipple Building and our new building and?
Uh, the shelves have been cleaned off, right?
Well, Dave and Pam are, they got a little bit left to do. They have to clean the shelves off and they wanna clean the floor up. But they said the floor, they can't use a mop, so they might have to.
They, they just, they just need access. That basement floor has nothing that
In a storage room? Is that what you're talking about? Okay.
There's some kind of laminate or that, they don't give.
That's downstairs, so, so that doesn't affect them. Yep. So what they need is the shelves in that big storage area so that they can start bringing some of the things up. Has EMA come and gotten their cots yet? Have we talked to them about it?
I have talked to Zach.
Cause here's the guy right here.
Yeah, that we need to get that done sooner rather than later, but.
They're not, uh, the way I understand it is, it's not like we throw our stuff away if it's not out of them. They just deal with them and we don't wanna long-term lease with them or anything like that. So, so, yeah, we're
So your cots are at the Nipple Billy?
Yes.
Yes, they're down. We, we, we have, um, several, quite a bit of, um, emergency preparedness stuff stored um, down there, as well as some programmatic stuff, um, in that, in that conference room. Um, we, we bought some cabinets, um, in anticipation of moving. Um, and, and having more organized storage, so those are down there. But we also have our exam rooms um, for our family planning program, um, setting down there, so.
Can any of that go to the boat shed?
I mean, they, they've actually, I mean, like Secondary Road said, they'd take a lot of them cots to their buildings, so then they'd be on hand in the communities. So, I mean, we've got places where we go, we just gotta.
Need the manpower, need to coordinate that, cause that'll
Need, need to kind of know how many cots we have scattered out, because I did, um, write for a FET project to get, um, blankets and like the linens for them all. So we kind of need to know where they're at and how many, so that I can get those.
I think there's like church ropes already got some.
Yeah.
I think that, well, I don't even, Aaron's got some stuff up at the hospital. So we've got some. We've got some amendment, well, he, that's why he's wanting that Salamander program, is so that we actually know where all of our stuff is or?
And I might be able to help with that.
There you go.
On the, the public health emergency preparedness end of things, that's an allowable expense. So we can probably put something together. I don't think they'll cover the whole thing, but we can probably help with a portion of that. So, yeah.
And, uh, Sam, uh, David, that's out in the lobby right now. Suzie could send me a text and say that'll fit in either one of those rooms.
Okay.
So we just decide.
So she just needs to clean the room first and then we'll move.
Dry.
Yeah.
You know, so we can sell. I'll stop up there after the meeting today and see how far we've gotten along and see how things are going.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm not sure.
I called, uh, I called Larry Harrod while I was there, was gonna send somebody up to fix that light that's out in, uh, Lisa's window. I got that going. Real close, talked to Jake yesterday about getting everything ready, and he's gonna have everything ready by the end of the week, next week. We could have it this week, but he's got some, uh, get our cameras up and, uh, get everything switched over. There may be a period of time where you may, but remotely on, but they didn't plant Thursday. He's gonna, he always, he's gonna be next week, he should be ready to go.
So his stuff will be ready to go? So.
I'd have to double up, you know, with both, both places, but there's, it's gotta be like that, yeah. A double. He's on, yeah. But he's on notice to have it ready to go, so that that's not
Okay.
So we're getting real close.
So then that'll help us get everything out of the Nipple Building then?
Yep, so.
When do we gotta be out of that again?
We haven't given up. Have you given them notice?
Well, they kind of gave us notice, cause I got that notice when I came up, uh, from the gals. Well, I think you were, uh, in your, at your meetings, and so I got a note with them.
We got Chuck coming back?
All right. I went to get Chuck.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Coming over.
Part of it, figuring our year, most of it, most of it. Virgin Islands, British Virgin Islands, the islands. I was just in the Dominican, so.
They're like, when is this guy leaving? When is this guy leaving?
He has a reputation wherever he goes.
I had to laugh, I spent what, four days watching the Army Corps of the Dominican Republic work. It's made six foot, six-foot round cement blocks out in the water, but you can bring a brick water. I've ever seen, uh, a lot of people work, y'all want a rotor on it with some pine cones welded together with a chain of voice. But I walked out there, cause you walk way out there. You know, they have them sucker just lined up perfect. Uh-uh. It's pretty wild out there.
Yeah, it's pretty rough.
Yeah, it's sort of a little country, but we, but it's still better than Haiti.
And the building that they're in is
It's just on the other side of the aisle.
So if you could
It's both like
Helping a part with it. I mean, you'd have, you and her, you, you need to get
We went through, uh, that's where Adam actually got married, was in Dominican, and we were in all explosive and it was fun.
Take value though, like, don't go off resort area or?
He wouldn't listen anyway.
I've never been, I've never been pulled out of Dominican. Been in Mexico and they've said that, I've been in the resorts. Yeah, I've been pulled out several times in Mexico. Dominican make sense of that. I usually don't see no need to leave an all explosive resort.
And so they can get the cots out of your way.
You should, your neighbor, boy.
Okay, that's taken care of.
What'd he say?
He's gotta do a presentation for CDC in the hospital, but after dinner, he'll be back. It's, it's during the dinner hour. And after that, he'll come back and look up Kim and they can get cord.
Great, 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 great. I think I visualize that to be
There's some bait out. I said, she said she could help you with the Salamander program.
Oh, really?
So that should get them hooked together.
Yeah, you guys have to, need to set a budget hearing date very soon. EMA? EMA budget?
Yeah, that's gonna be the same day as the conference board.
We, we will set that date tomorrow night.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
And you know, typically we set those, hey, we set that one and then you set EMA.
Yeah.
Because normally we do that up here at like eight o'clock in the morning, and then you do EMA at eight thirty.
For me?
If you wanna do it, it's gonna help them together. Yep.
Mayors are around if you need, need to be. For that, for the, the hearing, you know, we really don't have to have mayors, that's just where we go here, right?
They show, yeah, we used to hear.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be done tomorrow night. Both, both of our meeting.
We'll set the comments board, then you'll know to talk to EMA commission about it.
And we'll set it right after.
Conference board is what time? Five thirty?
All right.
Five thirty and then
Then your mate going like
Hi, Chuck. You get a haircut? Looking pretty sharp.
You look good with a ponytail.
Never too late.
Never, never too late.
Well, my, my seems to be growing slower as I get older. That's all it's color. It's got a little bit of It's got a little bit of platinum, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, let's go ahead.
Uh, first thing I give you, it's totally working off of things are kind of foreign. I've been using for a long time, but let's, don't do the, first cycle with them, not this side. It's a bold, bold one, others, up to the other side. Okay, I did the same thing, two years there, slid an axle. And then, budget year twenty-five, and then reestimate twenty-five, which is already important this year, I'm saying why. And then the budget, we're finally proven, often, often to approve today. So if you go budget fiscal year twenty-six and you go down that, compare that column to do the reestimate column to the budget. And then, so that means the column on the right-hand side is showing you the increases. I took a lot of items out of here, so I'll shorten it up a little bit, but first one you see there, ninety-five hundred, not the first one, but under expenditure.
Salaries.
Yep, ninety-five hundred. Okay, that means from last year to this year, ninety-five hundred dollar increase. Thousand dollars there for health insurance. Ten thousand, you know, these are all estimated. From equipment repairs, any increase. If you go down here to the D C B, all that's blocked, so our, our expenses for the equipment will go down. Nine hundred nineteen dollars. Do that's how we pay a machine. Uh, I just put a pick-up in there, I'm not sure, I haven't really talked about Kyle Travis too much yet. Not the last forever again. Uh, and rural recycling share, that's the blue ones you see around. And it's, it's expensive too.
Is that two of them in eighteen?
Yeah. And eighteen thousand, we got, and, uh, bill isn't grounded, it's kind of left the same. I'm not sure, fifteen thousand is a big number there. Don't know if we'll need it, but that shop, top up, and the hill, we should decide what we're gonna do there. I know shack and scale house, not gonna last forever either. Well, I'd love to get all the other ad hours.
Yeah. Put a GP medium spike.
Put over and then I spy a theater, Earl Barker, that's two thousand dollars from that, yeah, until now. And then engineering, there's on Kyle's car, I find out twelve different items for engineering and sales, I cut those out, I don't pay him with it. But, um, so from one year to the next, it increased about three thousand more. And we go to Carroll County disposal fees, they're just gonna go up. You know?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah, and we're working these mostly off of fourteen thousand ton a year.
Are we pretty consistent in how much trash we produce?
Pretty much, so this year, last year I had like, when we were using like twelve-five, now you're fourteen.
Yeah.
And all that weight coming in.
Oh.
Strange.
Because of the storm.
Charged by the ton.
That's what we figured, just probably the paint altered all the shingles from char ropes last week. About every house since last week, I moved her up on that.
Just about everyone.
Kind of working off fourteen thousand. Um, so that increases, uh, disposal fee, from, from, we got a new contract with, so Earl blockers. Forty-two thousand. Three dollars a ton, and then fourteen thousand times, that's forty-two thousand dollars. From hauling. Disposal fees, back to twenty-seven thousand, um, that contract's set to expire too. And that contract's set to expire too. That is kind of a bold part down here. Landfill contract with Carroll County. We did we did a contract in two thousand fifteen. And now that's one month of two thousand twenty seven, and I do know they're gonna approach you to another long term offer. That would be kind of and then here it is makes a lot of difference in the weather. See where it says reach eight. Put that money in there, but you'd let go here in twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. We had no rain. So we had no leachate in the pond. It is expensive when you gotta haul it.
That's sad. In a sense, we just had that low rain. You absolutely know.
Then we started putting that the fountain in there. That shoots it up in the air and so it.
Evaporates?
Evaporates. Yeah, but that.
My thing helps.
It helps. And then that year it was leaking in the creek too and.
Yeah, that didn't help.
So a lot of item there. Jean's been on our board before.
I have been. Many years ago.
Now Kyle is chairman.
Huh?
He's been chairman for some.
Since twenty fifteen?
Twenty fifteen?
Yeah.
Ten year.
For you, that's not a very long time, but.
Chuck's been on her since I was established.
Uh, but I wanted a couple of things to uh, then I said the only reestimated effort we got this year. The contract was Earl Barker starting in January, starting right now. So there's uh fourteen thousand, seven thousand ton at. Seven thousand. Forty forty, no, seven thousand ton at.
No, it was seventeen.
Seven thousand. Three, just three is three. And I couldn't think twenty one thousand dollar extra this year.
Yeah.
And uh, cause it's in the middle of the year. So then next year, I guess only about the increase of years.
Started that increase was in the middle of the year?
Yeah, right now. We didn't have any budget figures yet, so so that one hurt. And then it goes out for a whole year next year. That hurt. It's pretty much by weather, but.
But you said like Earl Barker hadn't. Is that right? Earl Barker hadn't asked for a raise for a long.
Yeah. So three thousand seven.
It might have hurt, but probably kept them in business.
I think the only thing he's ever asked for was a fuel surcharge added since I've well, since I've been.
It's three thousand and then he just brings up three dollars a ton, but it's a five year contract too, so.
Yeah.
I know.
Typically, Chuck, your expenditures versus your revenue are pretty close.
Yep. And budgets usually around a million dollars, but like I said, if it rains, there's a thirty five thousand dollar difference.
Right.
And then you have any trouble with it. So that kind of makes me, I wanted to show you these other funds down here on the bottom, left hand side. Crawford County, we use this for information, other Crawford County landfill funds. Uh. Transfer station post closure, that's used to take care of the landfill for thirty years after it's closed. We have a. About that thirty five thousand is for the transfer station. That's to make sure you have enough money. If it shuts down, your building's empty, got rid of all the garbage. So that that's filled out by an engineer every year. Groundwater protection is just the money we put away at one time. And T N R monitors it, but we try not to pay any town save for like comprehensive planning and stuff like that. And the ground or landfill post closure, that's the funds we have available for the thirty year closure. And we're coming up on fifteen years. And they determined an amount of money we need, like I said, if we don't have contamination, it goes pretty steady, but yeah, it's a trouble.
Do we have to keep that? Even after we make it thirty years here, I mean, our garbage is in Carroll. Do we have to have funds?
We pay part of that.
We have to keep money around for that too, right?
Yeah, it'll never go away.
Right.
A thirty year deal.
But you're not sticking any of our money in there in those funds.
Or you don't. Not currently.
It was a couple of years ago, we actually built some of the landfill that has its own um.
Balance.
Fun balance, so it doesn't they make money, it doesn't go into the general fund.
They are separate from the county there.
Twenty eighty twenty we did about um. Eighty eighty three, eighty four, something like that.
So we just put the the difference between his revenues and his expenditures, we that could just levy for that amount or not.
It's all just based off of tonnage fees that we charge their tax their cities, the taxpayers.
So we don't levy at all for.
I do not.
It's one of them things that actually is self sustained.
I have, I think I have one on my desk, but I didn't, I don't think I ever brought it in here, to be honest with you.
Anyway, extending every quarter, there's a fee that's been established and the city's paying it. And the county pays once or twice.
Well, I guess, to be honest, I guess we do levy this fifty thousand seven hundred.
Yeah, from rural fund.
Rural funds.
Probably. For you guys.
We're levying that much. For the everybody outside of the city, that's what we pay for garbage work.
For the budget that you guys put up here, there's only three two numbers, numbers that you're concerned with.
That is?
Fifty thousand seven.
Where's that? Front page? Oh, dot bumbum, where do we levy it out of? Oh, sanitation Department nine.
There you go.
Fifty thousand.
And the other one, Chuck?
Three thousand on general basic.
No, general basic is. Rural basic, we pay on staying the. Um, buildings out there and the ground belongs to the county. We just paid a dollar lease. Counties actually owns the land.
I see the county owns a land and then the landfill. We have a twenty eighty with them and and they pay us rent. One dollar a year.
I think it's one dollar.
Oh, we already. So any any if we had to build a new building out there, would the county build the building or would the landfill build the building?
I hope he brings you in a role.
Tried to make it self efficient.
Two roles, sorry.
You don't have to take downside funds, just do it by the scale and uh agreement. But some some day you're gonna be short on that.
Yeah. Scale house is getting pretty.
We're really trying to make, you know, for the scale house and you could probably just pay that on the general basis. Cause that's for everybody in the county. We have to use that. So you know, just stay around general basis.
So the GP medium won't work though?
We could make it work for Chuck.
We're still all this easy.
And it looks like that fifty thousand seven hundred has been the same number that. We have levied for years. That hasn't changed.
Hell, it does.
It does?
Well, we'll readjust that here.
Usually about.
When the fees change.
At least when the census is taken.
Yeah.
Okay. Nicety, gotcha. Okay.
Had a couple of years now.
Per capita.
And if we get if we notice our balances are just continuing to decrease, we'll have to readjust our fees and then based off our census that we. Adjust it accordingly.
Okay.
All right.
Easy, easy, lemon squeezy. There we go. Thanks, Chuck. I do like I like how you always do that.
Makes it.
Little history.
Little history.
Lot of facts.
Anyway, for you guys who were budget here, on on general basic, twenty six hundred dollars, twenty five hundred dollars or twenty seven? Three for three thousand.
We're getting back on sanitation.
To talk to Kyle about that because that's actually for the trees.
Trees.
Oh, okay.
All the cedar trees, you never talked about that?
Are you cleaning up trees? Are you doing some now in this current year?
Three thousand dollars if we get started. Oh, for the current year?
Yeah. With the wood grinding?
Yeah, there's always always trees out there. Small buried little cedars are always growing up there.
He's twenty five hundred there.
Or is that an old form? When'd you print that? Did you just print it recently? Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So it is current?
Yeah.
So we put three thousand in there for the trees and then tw- uh fifty thousand.
Twenty five now.
Oh, seven hundred should be.
You're in six thousand, you're insured.
And six thousand.
Any questions?
Not much fat to trim out of that.
Hard as I try and I just can't find any.
You you are a very lean individual.
That's what the pills start calling some garbage. I imagine in some jurisdictions, they probably do. New York City, now they probably are insured.
You know, I never thought about that. Don't we have, don't we get rocked over by Willie? Or do we get rocked for their denim?
Oh, north of.
So if we buy, if we bought a belt trailer of our own. Deliver to Carol. And then we could run over to Denham to grab rock. Got two way freight.
Oh, there we go, Dave.
We have talked about.
We have talked about that before. In that train, they put squeeze out Earl Bockers. I was just thinking, hmm, I go, we could do that.
We have talked about it, but we. It wasn't gonna pencil out.
They got an employee.
I'll tell you, cost of much to get started.
Yeah, well, on a belt trailer. They're fake, it's everything else, so. Yeah, well, there's there's a lot to it.
There's a lot they.
Lot of moving parts.
Is that that's what they have, the walking floor?
Yeah.
Yeah, which really wouldn't be real good for.
Hundred grand a piece, hundred twenty grand a piece.
I can't imagine that a belt trailer is a whole lot different. Depending on how big it is, it's probably even more maybe. Cause it's got that back deck.
I think we'd have another employee and benefits and.
Take days vacation.
I mean, if we'd already have somebody on staff, you know, basically.
Just taken care of.
But. I mean, that's about all we'd have to add. We got trucks, so we'd only have to add the trailer, but.
Outsourcing.
So you have employees there. I mean, maybe you make a part time person for the summer and go full time. I mean, because they don't, I mean, how many days a week do we load trash out?
Oh, that's activity though. Of the boss lady in there.
We're getting the big roofing season.
Yeah, sure, sure, makes sense. Big business.
She might have just, she must have glanced at the activity and did it did it off out.
I have a compactor. It just takes up less room. It doesn't make it any lighter.
You know, Eileen's always been on us, kicked about getting the food waste out of the garbage. How much tons of food waste still in the garbage? Be surprised. I think she has to make twenty five percent.
Sell it or what?
Well, I think you could if we had a combo, you'd have to catch it, get it out of the. Out of the garbage before it gets in the garbage, like the schools would have. That's probably where most of us.
Oh, yeah.
You have to separate it.
Restaurant.
Use different receptacles near the food than the garbage.
Your your house is a restaurant.
Uh, she said once like twenty five percent of garbage is food waste.
First thing you have to do is build a convos facility with a liner. We two are the one time in Minnesota. A lot too.
Yeah.
But it's expensive.
I mean, I've looked at them, they give by, we didn't get talent out one at home. Throw them in there like two days later, you got topsoil.
Adley has her own little crankup thing out back.
Is that why your yields are so much better than everybody else's?
That's what she.
A lot of time.
They'll eat the lettuce, you just compost it.
Those are gar- fertilizers regarding with it, no?
Right.
Um, what's the will of the board? Do we? Want to adjourn or you wanna take a recess and come back and look at some other budgets?
We like sit down the five of us and talk about some of the budgets and we don't have anybody coming in anymore, do we?
We've talked to everybody.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea to discuss a couple of them. You know?
Yeah, I know. I'm I'm all game for that being very messed up.
Oh, yeah.
Might be. Might be good to just.
Yeah.
Revenue, not the well.
Even if it's just a couple of hours, I mean, that.
We talked about it, but.
I don't have anything else on the.
You guys make sure you double check the county farm.
We gotta go through that. You wanna help him with his new programs, but you can't do everything this year.
So well, that's up, well, we let's take a recess, we'll go grab a bite. Quick bite and then come back and work on that for a little bit.
I'm good.
If I don't get it.
I got a headache.
Well, that's much garbage that starts like.
Thank you, Chuck.
So we said we had our meeting that we'd get around to talk trash.
Yeah.
Trash talking.
Oh, yeah.
Trash talking.
That's what we were doing today is trash talking.
We are on lunch break.
I'm I'm gonna run home.